Alright, I think that's our sign that we are live. Welcome everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order and Debbie will note attendance and we'll begin with our flags. The flag is right here to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, we are going to begin our meeting with the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement that we read at every regular board meeting and Tom has agreed to read it this morning.
Okay, first is collaborative governance. Members of the Board and Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the Superintendent's ability to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought by the Board, by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only make decisions only at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by Board vote. Communication agreements. Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the Superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the Superintendent or Board Chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and Superintendent will recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. Number three, when a Board member and/or Superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate. That's it.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Alright, we are gonna move to our agenda review and at this point I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second? Moved in second and any discussion? Okay, with out any, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Excellent, now we'll move to the consent agenda and I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
So moved? Second? Moved in second and any discussion on the consent agenda?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Great, and now we have our synraps. They online or in diary? Yep. Hello ladies.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Bash and I'm the ASB Vice President. We are excited to pass on all the accomplishments and activities that are happening at Silverton High School.
And hello, my name is Andrea Q, I am the ASB Secretary. We're gonna start off this evening with a sports update. Our wrestling team just finished their district competition and six wrestlers qualified for the Boys Wrestling State Championship. A huge congrats to our wrestling team and to the following wrestlers. Brad Henderson was the district champion at 220 pounds, Jacob Moore was second at 120 pounds, Steven Powell was second at 160 pounds, Oscar Marks was fourth at 140 pounds, Bo Zerter was fourth at 126 pounds, Joshua Jones was fourth at 138 pounds, and our district placers included Dalton Ritchie, sixth place heavyweight, and Eli Campbell, sixth place 140 pounds. Our girls and boys swim teams both took home third place at district meets this past weekend. SHS district champs included girls 200 free relay Katherine Hyde, Libby Grogan, Cordelia Bay and Lucy Franza, and Katherine Hyde setting a new school record for both the 100 fly and 100 backstroke. The following swim teams also qualified and are heading to state. Girls and boys 200 medley relay, girls and boys 200 free relay, boys 400 relay, Katherine Hyde in backstroke and fly, McConny Buckley in the 200 and 500 free, Kellin Hader in the 50 and 100 free, CJ Hollis in the 200 free, and Libby Grogan in the 100 back. Overall, SHS swim team ended up with 60 personal bests out of 69 swims. What an amazing achievement at their district event. Our boys basketball team has an away game tomorrow at West Albany. The varsity game will start at 7:30 PM with JV1 and JV2 playing at 6:00 PM. Our boys varsity team is currently ranked third in state and undefeated in league. Our girls basketball team has a home game tomorrow against West Albany at 7:30. Our girls varsity basketball team is ranked second in state. We are very excited about our unified basketball team who has started their season. They have a home game tomorrow at 6:45 PM before the girls varsity game. Our dance team just competed in Tiger and placed third in the 5A division. Additionally, our senior dance team members submitted their video auditions for the all-state team on Friday and the decisions will be out March 5th. This week, the dance team is preparing for a competition in spring on the 26th. Now onto our clubs and activities. We are proud of FFA as they recently had an unprecedented 15 students earn their state degree. They also have parliamentary districts coming up and will be presenting tonight at the school board. FBLA just competed at regionals with 12 competitors who are all moving on to the state competition in April. These competitors will join FBLA members who have already qualified for state. The environmental club installed 150 tree tubes and stakes at the replanted Mark Twain Elementary School Oak Grove. Our SHS choir is busy preparing for their mid-March spring concert and our Silverton Mass Despian Society is excited to present the production of Clue. Opening night is this Friday, the 18th. Other dates include the 19th, 20th, 24th, 25th and 26th. The cast of Clue includes Cameron Lynch as Waldsworth, Heather Poole as Yvette, Ava Bush as Miss Scarlet, Rory Teagan as Miss Peacock, Jay Payton as Mrs. White, Andrew Seber as Colner Mustard, Solomon Moore as Professor Plum, Sebastian Lozon as Mr. Green, Roman Pack as Mr. Bobby, Cassie Rook as the cook, Lev Martin as the motorist, Grace Trigger as the cop, MJ Lind as the singing telegram girl, Haley Smith as a reporter, Christian Holly, sorry, and Christian Holly, Sebastian Convino, Molly Axmaker and Maddie Rich as FBI agents. ASB is excited to move forward with our winter court and winter semifinal in, formal, sorry, in two weeks. We are also excited for our upcoming split assembly to honor our unified members and the court members. ASB is also set to begin our annual Best Fox Ever fundraiser. This year's contestants and team members have been chosen and this intense challenge and fundraising competition is about to kick off. The funds this year will be split between medical teams international and Silverton area community aid. This year's contestants are Miguel Cruz, Bjorn Doms, CJ Hollis, Libby Grogan, Solomon Moore, Brady Mikason and Tucker Stadly. Thanks again for your time and have a great evening, go foxes.
Thank you. Alright, speaking of an FFA presentation, I believe you guys are up next?
Well first of all, thank you so much for having us here tonight and having a chance to share with you, the students have been working really hard on one of the career development events. There's 25 of them in FFA and this happens to be one of them. You're gonna see a presentation tonight which is actually a parliamentary procedure meeting on steroids, so you're gonna see it go pretty quick. It's about 11 minutes, but they, in this time, they have to cover what's on their card and they have to get in three debates and actually two different, or an extra motion and so we wanna demonstrate that to you, just to show you what some of the students are doing out in the FFA building. My name's Scott Towery, one of the advisors along with Monica Baker and we're, I'm training the advanced team and she's training the beginning team and so tomorrow we actually have districts here in the library. So we just wanna show you one of the career development events that we do and as you can see, we also call this at the national level, they refer to this as the Super Bowl of all CDEs, so you can see the information that the students have to retain and do out of Robert's Rules of Order. So at this time, we're gonna let them go ahead and introduce themselves, I'll take the mic around to them and then they can go ahead and get started.
I'm Marissa Johnston, I'm a senior.
Carly Von Flu and I'm a junior.
Henry Beelenberg and I'm a junior.
I'm Rebecca Nordum and I'm a junior.
Raina McKinn and I'm a sophomore.
Johanna Otter and I'm a senior.
Is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I move to rescind the motion that reads, our chapter hosts an all-train vehicle training course and I was in the affirmative vote.
Second.
Is the movement seconded that a chapter hosts an all-train vehicle training course? This is to rescind this motion. This is an undebatable and undebatable motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor of rescinding this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The rescind fails and we will not be rescinding this motion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I move that our chapter sponsor an FFA agricultural science fair.
Second.
Is the movement seconded that a chapter sponsor an FFA agricultural science fair? Is there any discussion on this motion?
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
Delegation IRG to stand up and vote yes with me in this motion. An agriculture science fair would give a chance for all of our students in our agriculture science classes such as greenhouse and gardening and animal science and as well as our agriculture skills classes to demonstrate all the things they have learned throughout the year and represent it to all students to show what else is famous about and all the things we learn about and not just what goes on behind the scenes. Delegation, vote up the main motion.
Madam Chair.
Raina. I am strongly for this motion. I am currently enrolled in an agriculture skills class and we have recently done an agriculture science, agriculture science fair project. Although we did not show this project in a science fair, there's, it would have allowed us to have many different opportunities if we would have, which is why it is vital that we vote up this motion.
Madam Chair.
Joanna.
I urge a yes vote on this motion. I was talking to FFA member Leah Tweedy, she is in a greenhouse and gardening class and they are working on a hydroponics project right now. She was talking about how she'd love to show off the hard work she is doing in the classroom to the community, to show you guys what we do in FFA and just how important it is to our community. Vote up the motion.
Madam Chair.
Carly.
I rise in strong favor for this movement. I personally am not in agriculture science class and I would be very interested to learn more about what these kids do in their, in their class and I think it'd be a great way to share with others what innovation that students can bring and it'd be a great way for other students to recognize their peers and get support, so please join me in voting up this motion.
Madam Chair.
Henry.
Join me in voting up this main motion. When we have an agriculture science fair, this could bring a whole lot of opportunities to students that are already in an agriculture science class and it could also show the school of what FFA is and maybe it could show them, get interest into an agriculture science class. Join me in voting up this motion.
Madam Chair.
State a question.
Can we take our jackets off, it's very warm in here.
Considering this is a competition event, we must make improper and official odi at all times.
Appeal.
Appeal has been called.
Second.
Second has been called. Appeal has been moved in second. All those in favor of sustaining the decision of a chair on the question of privilege, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The appeal fails and the decision of a chair on the question of privilege is sustained. Is there any discussion on the main motion?
Madam Chair.
Joanna.
I urge a yes vote on this motion. I was talking to community member and Wilco employee Dan O'Connor. As you know, Wilco is a big sponsor of the FFA. He was telling me that he does not know much about what goes on within the FFA and by putting on an agriculture science fair for our community, we'll be able to display the hard work that our students put in class to the community and show just a little bit more of what happens within FFA. Vote up the question.
Madam Chair. Rebecca.
I move to refer this to a committee of three FFA officers.
Second.
With the power to investigate and report back.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we refer this matter to a committee consisting of three chapter officers with the power to investigate and report back. Is there any discussion on this referral?
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I stand in favor of this motion for spiky reasons. As a student-led organization, I believe that we should have faith in the student-elected officers to help organize events such as these that our students would be involved in. It would get our student officers that help run our silverton chapter out to the community to advertise it as well as gather students to go make these agriculture science fair projects, bringing both FFA and the community together to show what our students have been working on. Delegation, vote yes on this referral.
Madam Chair. Carly.
I move to amend this by adding or inserting, and our advisor, Mr. Towery.
Second.
Is the movement seconded that we amend this referral by inserting chapter officers and our advisor, Mr. Towery? Is there any discussion on this amendment?
Madam Chair.
Carly.
I believe by adding Mr. Towery to the committee that we could add additional advice from an adult who knows a lot about agriculture science since he is a teacher and he could bring support to the students and help them investigate all areas of concern just because he knows a lot about it and he's been in it for a long time, so please join me in voting up this amendment.
Madam Chair.
Raina. I urge you all to vote yes on this amendment. It is without a doubt that our chapter, our, our chapter advisor, Mr. Towery, would be part of planning this agriculture science fair, which is why it is vital, he is part of the team to go out and research more information on this motion, to have an agriculture science fair. Stand with me and vote up this motion.
Madam Chair.
Henry.
I urge you to vote up this amendment. Because of many questions about this agriculture science fair, hopefully if this committee will go and report back to us, then hopefully we can get and to see if people actually wanna host an agriculture science fair and maybe if they talk to Mr. Towery, then they can hopefully see what other projects might be coming up and if there are any interesting projects to do with science fair. Join me in voting up this amendment.
Madam Chair.
Joanna.
It is crucial that we vote up this amendment. In the beginning of every meeting, our advisor gives a statement. He says, being older than you, I've been asked to advise you from time to time. Him being older than us, he has the wisdom that we do not have as teenagers and this wisdom that he has, he can bring into that committee and make a, help us make a more fruitful decision for the benefit of our chapter. Vote up the amendment. Madam Chair.
Raina.
I move to postpone definitely to the next chapter, to the next regular chapter meeting, which would be in March.
Second.
Is the movement seconded that we postpone this referral to the next chapter meeting, which would be in March? Is there any discussion on the postpone definitely?
Madam Chair.
Raina.
It is vital that we postpone this. Our school is currently going over, our school and not, not only our school but also our chapter is currently doing a lot of other extracurricular things such, or activities such as the boot scoot and boogie which is happening, not, or this weekend as, as well as the winter formal. By postponing definitely, it would give us more time to come up with different ideas of when we could have this agriculture science fair. I urge you all to vote up the...
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I rise in all position to this postponement. This postponement will push it out to March, giving our students less time to figure out what agriculture science projects they would be able to do, giving them less time to prepare. Pushing this out is only detrimental to our students for giving them lack of time to prepare as well as for finding out if we are able to do this in our building as well. Vote down the referral.
Madam Chair.
Henry.
Join me in voting up this postponement. Because, pardon, voting down postponement, because of current events coming up and because of FFA coming up, our FFA officers are very busy trying to plan FFA week and hopefully if we can vote down this postponement, then hopefully we can hurry this motion on. Join me in voting down.
Madam Chair.
Joanna.
Due to the arrival of our guest speaker, I move to lay the motion on the table. Second.
Lay this table on, moved in second. This is an undebatable, undebatable motion and requires a majority vote. All those in favor of laying this motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Division.
Division has been called. All those in favor of laying this motion on the table, please rise. All opposed, same side? Thank you, this motion will not be laid on the table. Is there any discussion on the postpone definitely to the next FFA March chapter meeting?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
What vote is required to adopt a, a previous, or postponed, or postponed definitely?
It requires a majority vote of the assembly to pass the postponing definitely. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Raina.
It is vital that we vote up this postponement. I have recently talked to our chapter reporter Janet Scherter and she has said that she, not only her, but other members of the chapter are extremely overwhelmed with everything that is happening both, both inside and outside of school, which is why it is not only vital, but it is extremely important to our chapter that we vote up this postponement.
Madam Chair.
Carly.
If we cannot vote up this postponement, it would only push back the science fair further and make it harder for students to get their science projects done. I think that we need to make this decision now, it's not very complicated and so if we can make the decision, we can proceed and making arrangements and letting kids know that they can start on their projects, I think that we need to fail this postponement.
Are we ready for the question?
Second.
Previous question has been moved in second and requires a majority vote. All those in favor of previous question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Previous question passes and we move on to the postpone, voting on the postpone definitely, which would postpone matters to next FFA regular meeting in March. All those in favor of this postpone definitely, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The postpone definitely fails. We will now vote on the amendment to the referral which would insert and advisor, Mr. Towery, after three chapter officers. All those in favor of this amendment to the referral, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. This amendment to the referral passes. We are now, we are now vote on the newly amended referral, which would read that we refer to a committee of three chapter officers and advisor, Mr. Towery, to investigate and report back. All those in favor of the newly amended referral, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The newly amended referral passes.
Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Is the movement seconded to adjourn this meeting? Is there any objection to this adjournment? Seeing as there is none and there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Very nice guys. Does anybody have any questions that they have for the six individuals?
Do you run your regular chapter meetings this way?
Close, we don't go quite as fast, but we do every meeting. It's one of the things that's important in our meeting that we do have orderly fashion, we allow students to have the right to be able to speak at any time and to make motions. So yes, we do use parliamentary order at FFA meetings and that's where they start off and they start to learn that, but obviously these six have been practicing and they have, you know, learned a lot of different, I mean, there's, there's over 20 different parliamentary procedure rules that you can use and we still, I mean, there's still some more that we still need to learn, so anyway, we think this opportunity, we thank you for a chance to come here to show you what some of the students are doing.
Are you really good how to tag science fair? That would be great. No, I am really good.
Thanks guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, I think that's gonna move us to our principal report and I believe that Kirsten Jorgensen is up first.
Thank you, that's sort of a tough act to follow, but I'll see what I can do here. I'm gonna be talking tonight about Bo Scottsmills School and the Silver Falls Preschool. Sorry, I forgot, got twisted in my notes here. So Scottsmills, we are right currently at about 143 students, so we, in March of last year, we were at 107, so we're bringing back a lot of the students we lost during COVID. Our pre-COVID enrollment was 169, so we're not quite back to there, but we're, but we're making some growth. This year, I would say, and in talking with my staff, kind of about the presentation, this is definitely been the most challenging for us of the COVID years. I think it, like the first, it's like, what's going on and then it was happening and then now we're like trying to make that balance between meeting kids where they're at, meeting the social emotional needs and just that balancing act, so we are, I'm gonna focus today on all the highlights and the positives, cause we all need that in our lives right now. So the kids are what keep us going every day, you know, those days when you're thinking, oh, what's, what's gonna happen? You see the kids and you're like, that's, that's why we're here. So we are celebrating all kids learning every day in our building, that's been such a joy to have them back. Our staff at Scottsmills has been so supportive and flexible with the staffing needs because of absences. We are very fortunate to have three of our ed assistants. One is a licensed teacher who just would rather be an ed assistant, so she's available as a sub and then we have two emergency subs, the district has supported at our ed assistants that are great in the classroom and know our kids and know our systems. And then we have four parents who we've convinced that subbing would be a great opportunity and so they're classified staff, so we've been really lucky at Scottsmills to not have a lot of interruptions with having to combine classes or having me teach eighth grade math, which would never, never be good. So we've really been lucky with the, with the staffing and our staff is just really good at rolling with it, so we're gonna make it work. You might not have an ed assistant in your class today, but they, they make it work, so I'm really thankful for that. We are continuing our work with the edX team and the curriculum mapping and unit mapping and while that is a bit of a challenge and a big learning curve, I feel like it's making some good movement forward with that work. And I really appreciate my edX coach, has been a huge support for me this year. I do, we also, Scottsmills, we talk about it a lot, but we've got great support from our community and our PTC with just helping us as we need it and so that's something to celebrate. And then while I did, didn't invite her, I didn't think she would be joining us tonight, Lisa Garrett has been a teacher at Scottsmills for 35 years, teaching first grade and she's been our reading specialist and she's officially retiring as of the end of this year, so we're super sad to lose her, but she's already booking trips and really excited about her future and those are gonna be really tough shoes to fill. She's a reading guru and we frequently would have students come back just to visit her to say, you know, thanks for helping me, lots of parents have commented on her teaching her kids to read and so we're just, we're gonna miss her. I have a presentation here with some student pictures of our STEAM program, so we're in our third year of a grant from the South Metro Salem, it's a lot to say, South Metro Salem STEM Partnership and we've, we're, we have, get a lot of grant funding for staff, extra duty time to work on STEAM projects and as well as the materials to make those projects happen. We have lots of projects in process, we have an outdoor classroom we're getting going that we're gonna have, which was very convenient with COVID times, a place for students to learn and that's gonna include an outdoor garden, I mean, an outdoor garden, obviously, a gardening space and then tables and space to learn for students outside. We have a new school sign and I'm glad our FFA group is here, cause we're working, we partnered with Scott Towery and to help create that sign for Scottsmills, we've had some of our students design the sign and then creating it in our FFA program and then students help when it kind of gets put in and, and that's an exciting event to come. If you've seen our sign, you know, we could use a new one, so we're excited about that. And so our Makerspace is, was a dream and kind of was making progress with it and then Dan Bush had a great idea for us to hire Laura Blair as a TOSA this year to help with student support, because we didn't have a counselor and no one was applying for that position and then she's a STEAM guru, which we really didn't know when we got her in the building and she has a ton of experience with the Makerspace and so we, uh-oh, I broke it, Daniel? Oh, there we go. Makerspace, if you're not familiar with it, is a collaborative workspace for creating inquiry, learning and exploring new ideas, so the students have an opportunity to go to this Makerspace, which is in one of our mods and the work that they've done in there has been amazing so far this year. That was, so the picture is kind of what it looked like, it was sort of a storage, we had lots of that furniture that needed like a new wheel put on, but we really didn't know when it was gonna happen. To the picture on the other side is our Makerspace currently, it's just full of great opportunities for students and I really would, if you wanna come look at it, we'd love to give you a tour and let you see what kids are doing in there. So the art, the picture of the poppies is something our middle school kids did for Veterans Day, they made those paintings, it's called a perspective drawing. They created structures out of cranberries during the holidays and then we have a snowman catapult there on the far side with our second graders. So Mrs. Blair does monthly thematic units, so as you can see, this is the holidays and she does different units and teachers can pick which one they want her to do with her kids and so they go in there for 30 to 45 minutes, they can choose what their theme, what activity they wanna do and Laura runs the kids through it, so it's a great opportunity. And then teachers, something they said at first, it's a great time for some prep, but a lot of them like to join and participate with their kids, cause it's fun. This was a Kinder Sensory and Exploratory Stations that she did with them, which as This was a Kinder Sensory and Exploratory Stations that she did with them, which as you can tell, it's messy. I've walked in there and I think, oh my goodness. And she just thinks this is what happens in the Makerspace. It's just, it's a mess, but it's great. Kids are loving it. So we have some great things we are working on. The kindergartners are getting ready for pull and force unit this spring. And then the most, the kind of the real exciting one is because the middle schoolers don't always get excited about things like this. So we have a dragon, dragon dance project that we're working on and that's with our middle school. And I had to write, make myself in notes because I can't remember all the details. But the, there is a, English Language Arts is writing about, it's connected all to the Olympics in Beijing and then the Chinese Lunar New Year. And so the English Language Arts is writing about the traditional dances. They're learning the dance and with, in PE. And then they're making the dragon heads in this, in the Makerspace. And then they're doing a, I'm going to say this wrong and I don't want anybody to panic about fireworks, something with fireworks. It's not making fireworks, but we're not making fireworks, but there's something with fire to connect in science, a lab. It's, I should have wrote that one down because now Scott's really nervous. So we're really connecting that everybody together in these projects and getting the kids excited and they're really excited. They're not excited about performing the dance at this point, but we'll, we'll get them there. So that is our, that's Scotts Mills. And then the Silver Falls Preschool. So we're really excited to, we have 18 students this year. So remember last year we had five. And last year at this point in the year, we actually had none because we didn't have a location already and stuff. So we're really excited. We have 18 students. We have 18 slots in the preschool promise grant. And then we have two tuition-based students. And I, when I presented on it before, we only have two tuition-based because we only have room for 20 in our location. So there are, actually, there's been other people who have reached out wanting a spot that don't qualify for the grant, but would like to be. And then we just don't have the space because there's pretty strict guidelines on that. But we are working on a plan to have a bigger space for our preschool. We are still housed at the United Methodist Church and they are a great partner with us. When there's issues in the building, we try to help either, you know, our custodial crew will go and do a deep clean. They, they fix the plumbing. I mean, we have kind of a good, a good partnership with them. They're really great to work with. We are learning, there's a lot to learn in bringing pre-K into a K-12 system, but we're learning a lot. Working with the ESD for early intervention supports, which has been really great. It's really great to see them come in and provide the families and us the resources to support students at the age of three, knowing how that's going to benefit them when they get to kindergarten. And that is really our goal is to prepare, prepare them for kindergarten success. We have monthly parent engagement nights. We offer a ready-for-K class for parents once a month. And then we also do kind of family engagement, kind of fun, like a holiday event. And we're doing something with Read Across America Week and Dr. Seuss. And we also are really excited about the work of a kindergarten readiness transition team where we have some professional development offered by the ESD. And it's, we have some of our kindergarten teachers in the district that are attending that with myself and the preschool teacher. And then we're working on creating kind of a, a plan to move forward with a better partnership on making sure we're preparing students district-wide with being ready for kindergarten when they, when they enter Silver Falls School District. So I did add a couple fun pictures of our students. I do want to note the early learning and pre-K guidance is different, so that's why you see students not wearing masks because they're not required. Students just kind of having fun. We got a great little playground. And then I just like, those pictures right there just like make my day. They're, they really are having fun with learning and three and four-year-olds are pretty, pretty fun crowd to hang out with. So if you ever want to visit the preschool, we'd love to have you. And that is all. Any questions? Debates? Do you want to debate?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as you can see, Brad Davidson is up next.
All right, thank you. So this is my fifth year at Silverton Middle School and I just want to give you just a rough idea of what's been going on this year, especially coming out of distance learning and hybrid and all that stuff. So I, on the beginning of my report, I have some enrollment numbers, class sizes, demographics, and some academics. And I won't spend a ton of time with that because kind of like Kirsten, I want to get to just a feeling of little bits of normalcy that, that I think are keeping people excited about the future and what's to come. So enrollment-wise, we, it's been an interesting ride over the last five years. I go back to 2016 and 17, the year before I got here and we were at 451. And then you can see the climb there. And two years ago, when I was here talking about us being worried, we, we had handed out 530 registration packets, which was a little concerning because of space and staff and not knowing quite what was going to happen. But the fires hit, we stayed in distance learning. And then when everything kind of shook out, we were in the 590s and 580s for that year. As you can see, this year we're at 453. We've wavered between 450 and 465 throughout this year. I think there's a, we've seen more movement in and out of Silverton, in and out of states than we normally would. And so it's fluctuated quite a bit, but right now we're at 453 as of today, which is pretty standard with enrollment drops throughout the district and the state. Our current STAR data is there. That's another thing that I was trying to, I usually like to give references to what's happened in previous years, but last year was a fairly abnormal year. So I just did the sixth, seventh and eighth grade STAR reports from January of this year and then January from two years ago. And that's not an apples-to-apples comparison because, you know, sixth grade this year is, they were, you know, fourth graders two years ago. But just to give a frame of reference of, of where we were two years ago, January compared to now. And so obviously we're hard at work at that. There's a lot to, a lot to work on and a lot to do with kids to help them get back to where they were before and, and help them meet their goals. Kirsten mentioned this in terms of, you know, our, our goal one in terms of keeping every kid on track to graduate is I, I'm, I like STAR as a universal screener, but I'm more excited about teacher-created assessments down the road where we can really dial in and teachers know their kids the best. And they make those assessments and use those on a frequent basis to get kids where they need to go. I think we'll see good growth across the board. Before I get to kind of how are we doing this year and the different stuff that feels a little bit more, more normal, I want to reference goal three, which is long-range, well, for me, which is long-range facilities. And as you know, I, I think, I want to, well, first of all, I'll say thank you for supporting the long-range facilities effort. You know, that's been a long time coming and for some of you, it's been a good portion of your life, conversations about this. And so I appreciate that. And I know that I don't need to tell you that the, the middle school is, is one of those that is high on that list. And I'll say once again, I won't go through all the things that I've said before to this group is that the, the staff at my school has worked really hard to create a, a good environment in spite of the building that we're in. And they made the best of it and tried to stay positive because of it. But as you can guess, they would all be in favor of a new middle school someday. So, and there's good documentation about why. So I think that the biggest bright spot was for me, just to have kids back in the building was, was a lifesaver because I, being, being on, being on Google meetings for another year, that was going to be a big struggle. So just them coming back into the building was a huge bright spot in spite of the difficulties because in-person instruction is better than, than online. It was funny, I thought about what has happened in terms of building or projects that we've been doing. I got new modulators because we were running out of space and then we didn't use them last year until the very end. And so I say new-ish modular classrooms because this is the first year we've actually used them full-time. And so now I have a good dedicated space for our Title I program and our ELD program that I haven't had before. Because as I mentioned, a lot of programs and people are shoved in former closets is a nice way to put it. And so now we have a little bit more space for kids, which is good. We've really tried to focus on the connection, re-entering kids back into normal school. Just organization and some of those executive functioning skills of doing school has been, has been something we've had to reteach. And so through our advisory group and homeroom and making that connection and just doing normal fun things has been something we've been trying to do. And over the last two years, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned my, so my SST team, my student support team is kind of my, my first line of support right outside the classroom, dealing with anything having to do with behavior, attendance, mental health issues, evaluations, all sorts of stuff where they're making connections with community support and just helping those kids out. Therese, shout out to Therese Gerlitz for leading that in the last two years because I think with everything else going on, I didn't, I wouldn't have had the time to invest in that like I needed to. And she really picked that ball up. And then having Paula Cross, a longtime counselor in my building, and Tom Fox, especially in the last two years, has been invaluable. And I think I've mentioned Inez Bradford before with our ALLTED program. It's a really important kind of top-tier intervention for our kids. And then just a general shout out to my, to my staff, making it through the last two years in the best way possible with ever-changing guidance and guidelines, either daily or weekly. It's, it's been difficult for them and they've, they've persevered through that, especially my office staff. As any of you know who's seen a school, the secretaries run the show. And I, like, I joke that, you know, a teacher could get a sub for a day and that could be a struggle. A principal could be out for a few days and people may not notice. But if the secretaries leave, the whole thing burns to the ground. And so my, Leslie Teigen, Maricela Sprower and Jennifer Wolersheim, my office staff, have kept things going whether we're in person or not. And just a big shout out to them. So I say some normalcy returning and that's the thing I think that has kept people going. And so I just put some, I didn't do a nice presentation like Kirsten did, but I put some stuff in your packet and sent some stuff to Debbie. But I was trying to think back of what felt for a brief moment like normal and brought a lot of joy. And homecoming week for me felt really, really good. Our dress-up days, the, the parade and the turnout by the community and doing the floats again and that kind of thing was, was a blast. Halloween, I say Halloween was back in a vengeance. One of the things that happened, we, I, I didn't ask Jackie today, but I, we had more kids dress up than ever before by far. I mean, I, I don't know what the percent was, but we were going to do a judging contest. And like the whole school came into the cafeteria and we had to cut it short and do some sort of modified thing because we just didn't have the time. Every, almost every kid dressed up for Halloween. And normally with middle school, you know, it's a little like, is it cool to do it? Are there enough people doing it? And so everybody just did it. And that felt, that felt really fun. And we did a, a big school-wide trick-or-treating thing where they ran around to the different rooms and did trick-or-treating stuff. Holiday and Christmas stuff, I, I wanted to put Brittany's Urture in there for sure. All the AG kids made their teachers the ugly sweater. It wasn't just buy an ugly sweater, so they constructed their own ugly sweater, which you can imagine was horrifying, but great to, for them to put on their teachers and have them walk around. So Brittany won the award for that. And then just today, we did a big Valentine's Day thing where kids were going around doing Valentine's things and doing door decorating. And I have Daniel Bressenio looks really good on that picture right there. And, and then Jackie Renaud had some kids, that's before school started, just working on the, on the property there. But I just want to say that in spite of all the difficulties and the tough stuff going on, there's little bits of, well, I would say little bits of joy throughout it that make it worth it, that feel good again. And so anyway, that's my, that's my general report and I wanted to focus on those things that I'm just excited to see those things coming back. And I look forward to in the future, getting back to our big veterans assembly and stuff like that. So anyway, do you have any, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yep.
All right. Next up, we have SFBA and I think they're on camera.
So Daniel will need to promote Allison Stolfus.
And you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. And you see me though?
No. At least I can.
Is that yeah? I can barely hear you guys.
Sorry, no, I don't see you, but I can hear you.
We can hear you fine Allison, but we can't see you.
All right. Oh wait, I have a button. It's been a really long day. So, and David, I wanted to show my presentation and I don't know if he has to do that or if I can do that. I can share my screen. I'll try that when I'm ready. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Stolfus. I'm the SFBA president. And I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed my students advocate for science fair. I'm all in on that. That's awesome. Good stuff. So I really enjoyed listening to Kirsten and Brett's presentation about schools and about how that community is going. And remember, like my role is really to be the teacher's voice, find her, the SFBA represents over 90% of the teachers in the district from all the schools. And we sent out a burnout survey this week just to kind of see how teachers were doing because we're so busy this year and we're so separated with the COVID procedures, it's really hard to get a handle on things. So I would say overall, like from my own perspective, and I know Jen Trager works in a school, she kind of knows, that this year's been unusual for us in that we're used to stress. We're used to having periods of things being really tough, figuring out logistics, problem-solving, dealing with crises, you know, it comes with the territory. And this year, at least from my perspective and other teachers I've been able to talk to, our perspectives is that that stress is, is not really finding any, any relief. It's always something else that's coming up. And I think all job sectors are probably experiencing a similar, you know, similar challenges. For us in the high school, you know, we have 180 to 200 students each, every day. And the quarantine, I'll see, you know, I don't think that's as big of a deal as just pretty chronic absences from all kinds of, for all kinds of reasons. We're having vandalism problems in the high school, so we have certain bathrooms that are locked certain periods. So kids come to class and don't figure out where to go to the bathroom and they're all running around. And I think the elephant in the room really is our community is having some, some pains with the masking policies. We're a little upset about that. Some kids are upset about that. And we're just trying to actually do our very hard jobs all in the middle of, of those difficult circumstances. So we're getting, we're getting tired. So the executive group and I made a Google survey. It's very, very short and I'm hoping that I can share it to you in this format. Are you guys seeing that?
Yep.
Okay. And it was just a quick anonymous survey. I didn't break it down by building. I just wanted to really quickly get teachers without like any kind of fear, kind of share where they're at. So out of 126 responses, which is about 60% of our membership, this is what we got. We actually looked at what burnout symptoms were. And so we just asked our members to kind of identify, you know, aspects that they could relate to. So chronic fatigue and exhaustion, 80% of our teachers said yes to that. Irritability or just being short-tempered, which comes with chronic stress, is about 73%. I thought this was interesting. An antisocial or stronger desire just to be alone after the chaos of the day, which I relate to, 60% of our teachers could relate to that. We asked them some really important We asked them some really important questions. I told Dan that I would be sharing this with, with the DO and with you, the board, after this presentation. We asked teachers, are you considering leaving your job that you have now with Silver Falls School District before the end of the year? We had 24% of our respondents say yes, and we have 23% that said they were open to the idea. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Only 52% said no, they're not going to leave at all. I thought that was really concerning because I think in Silverton, we really pride ourselves on having staff that stays, a community that's bonded together, and we're proud of what we built. And that was extraordinary to me. We asked our members, would you consider leaving your position at the end of the school year and not coming back to our district? 44% of our teachers said yes. 30% said somewhat they're definitely open to the idea. And that's totally shocking out of 126 teachers. We asked them, are you actively looking for different career opportunities, which likely just means moving out of the classroom or out of education? 18% said yes or actively looking, 40% said somewhat looking. We asked of those members who were within five years retiring, if they thought they might retire earlier. 22% said yes. When you break that down, I think that came out to about 30 teachers. You can ask, you know, Mr. Bush, can we replace 30 teachers in the next couple of years? I don't know. There's really not that many applicants to positions. And finally, I thought this was an interesting question. Do you think communicating with leadership or administration about your burnout, asking for relief, has resulted in action that gave you relief? Understanding that there's a lot of things I know our administrators cannot control in this pandemic, but 52% of our teachers said no, they do not feel like they've had any relief. 33% said somewhat. This blue pie square or slice is yes. So I think, I think the leadership team and I were a little bit taken aback by this because, in fact, my feelings of, of my working conditions and can I do this job and can I do it well? I actually feel better than a lot of my colleagues. I'm not leaving Silver Falls. Like, this is my home and I'm devoted to the school system. But I can't say that all teachers feel the same. And so it's lovely to hear, like Kirsten and Brett, talk about homecoming and Halloween and things like that. And we are, we hold on to those joys, too. But I'm telling you that we're, I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking that this is going to resolve itself if we don't address the issues that the caretakers themselves are losing the ability to take care of kids. I really firmly believe it. We've seen Salem Kaiser respond to this with offering, like, retention bonuses, giving them, I think, I wrote down over $2,200. Half of that now, half of that they come back in November. Woodburn has done the same thing, half now, half later, I think it was $2,000. In Salem Kaiser, they're giving them two more full non-contact workdays. And they've also given them all their PLC time every Wednesday to be teacher-directed. So it's recognizing that there's a problem and scooping in to kind of give relief to the people that are working. Also need to share, like, so everything I've done, I've had to do in-person, I've had to do somewhat hybrid, and I've had to do it all online, and now I'm doing it back with kids that don't come to school. So it's literally like making lessons, it's making lessons, making lessons, which is part of what's taking so much time. You have schools that have flipped buildings, teachers that have flipped subject areas. It's very, very chaotic. And I guess the, another interesting thing I heard this week was from three separate emails from new teachers to the district. They're a little bewildered. I've heard words like, I don't feel safe in my school. I've heard words like, I don't understand why schools aren't ran with understanding schools are in charge and we understand where our jobs are. We need the authority to do our jobs. And one of them told me there's no way they're going to stay here this year. They want a larger school district so that there's, like, more control under, like, the district per view under. So I, I don't want to pop anyone's bubble, but I do really want to raise awareness that our teaching staff needs your attention. Our teaching staff needs some help, or our schools are going to be in real trouble. And I'll email this all to you so that you can see it and hopefully discuss some actions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Allison? It's important information, and I'm sure that Dan and Scott are going to be taking a look at it as well here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We heard that OSEA is not going to be presenting tonight, so that's going to move us into our first public comment. And I'm going to open up the paragraph that I read at the beginning here, and I'll read it. Okay, we are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If you are attending remotely, you can email Debbie or you can use the raise a hand feature in Zoom. Before beginning your comment, please provide for the record your name, address, and relationship to the district and the subject of your comment. In order to ensure equity among speakers, result, or, excuse me, remarks are limited to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wish to appoint a representative, we'll extend it to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the agenda, and that's going to be specific to discussion and action items of the meeting. Please be aware that the board's role during the public comment period is to listen, and rarely will members of the public receive an immediate response to their questions or comments. Finally, the board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during the public comment period. Remember that we all model the way for our students. We ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the board's decorum policy. Thank you. And we had three people that had signed up before the meeting, and we're going to go ahead and start with them. And I'll also mention that, given that we have a really, really packed agenda, we are definitely going to stick to the three minutes. We're already at eight o'clock right now. And we are going to ask that you, if you can, make your comments brief. If they start becoming redundant, if everybody's saying the same thing, maybe just don't come up, and we probably will cut us off, depending on how it goes, let's just target 8:30, 8:40, somewhere in there, okay? So we are going to start with Lee Mercer, and I believe Lee is remote, joining through Zoom.
Daniel, did you catch that? Lee Mercer to promote panelists, please.
Do we want to start with somebody else?
So Lee was promoted to panelists.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, there we go.
Are you ready? Okay. My name is Lee Mercer. I live on Lone Oaks Loop in Silverton, and I have grandkids in the Silver Falls School District. Thanks to the board and the administration for your work trying to listen to diverse voices of students, parents, and community members expressing their views on how best to deal with public health issues associated with the COVID pandemic. Some support public health measures such as masks, masks and vaccinations, others have other views. I hope we can all agree that the health and safety of our students and community, as well as optimizing the students' education, are our common shared goals, and we should work together to achieve these. In viewing the imperatives before us in meeting these goals, I have to go back to the saying, those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. I recently finished writing a book, The Archangel Invasion, about the Allied Intervention in the Russian Civil War, in which Americans, British, French, Canadian, and other troops fought the Bolshevik army in North Russia through the winter of 1918, 1919. When they arrived in Archangel, Russia, many of the Allied troops were infected with the then-spreading Spanish Flu pandemic. Spanish Flu was a misnomer, actually, as the first outbreak was at Fort Riley, Kansas, and the French named it the American Flu. But as the US was France's ally in World War I, they called it the Spanish Flu. Before the US troops could engage in combat with the Bolsheviks in Archangel, Russia, 66, 65 had died of the flu, some on the voyage over and some in the hospital in Archangel. About a third of the Americans fighting in Russia died of flu, not in combat. Soon, as we now know, the American Flu, misnamed Spanish, had spread throughout Russia, the battlefields of Europe, and around the world. 500 million people were infected, one-third of the world's population. Before it ended, after four major waves through 1920, it killed between 25 and 39 million people worldwide. In the US, 675,000 died, less than the over 900,000 who have died in the current pandemic, which is more than all the US troops killed in all the wars in the 20th and 21st century. Due to infecting the soldiers in World War I and the Russian Civil War, it had a devastating effect on the world's population as it spread around the globe. In the US and elsewhere, public health measures, including social distancing, like closing public schools, theaters, and places of worship, helped keep the fatalities down. Wearing face masks became common through, though there was some resistance in some areas. Later, studies found public health measures such as banning masked gatherings and wearing a face mask could cut fatalities up to the 50%, but this was dependent on them being imposed early and not being lifted prematurely. To conclude, I, I, I think we need to work together to deal with reasonable public health motions and avoid the kind of conflict that leads to civil wars in our country by working together for the good of students. Thank you.
Next up, we have Charlotte Detwiler. Charlotte here? Yep.
I believe kids should go to school and be respected for their choices, and that they should have to support whether others agree or disagree. Over the last few days, there was so much segregation because a group of kids refused to wear masks. Those kids went from the auditorium to outside to a small gym. There are a bunch of posts made about those, us sitting outside and why we got moved to, and that's why we got moved to the small gym. Well, I'd say we weren't forced outside, but at the same time, we were because we, they gave us no alternative. I got told by a staff member, they gave us a choice to sit inside or outside. And she said, we, she said, we chose to outside, though yet we never got a choice. I had told one of the administrators about my concerns and about how strict the teachers were about masks. He took those concerns, and I feel like, I, I feel like they used them against me because I refused to wear a mask. That's the last time I'll ever trust an administrator because they're pretty good at tricking you. They will make you think you have, they have your back, but they don't. There were so many accusations made against the no-mask group, and it was mainly made by adults and staff. We were told by school staff to take down our posts because they were false, but they weren't. There was a post about a teacher with no mask on, though yet she was, she was one to force the mask on the kids. They said the teacher was drinking water, and that's why she had her mask off. You could clearly see in the photo that that's not the truth. And for the adult that lied like that, that's unprofessional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Lori, Lori Chadwick, who I believe is joining us online.
Jonathan, can you repeat the name again?
Lori Chadwick.
Hi, I'm here. I'm Lori Chadwick. I'm going to read something from a nurse that's in our community. She wanted to remain anonymous. I did CPR on a child with COVID today. I felt her ribs crack under my body weight. I heard her parents let out the noise any nurse can recognize a mile away, screaming mother losing her child. This same child was talking about My Little Ponies with me three hours before. This same previously healthy child was in kindergarten. I've watched people die from COVID. I've held their hands. I've consoled their families. But when it's a child, it's different. You can easily see the face of your own children in pediatric patients. You can imagine the disassociation with reality that I felt after coming home, seeing a small group of people from the school district, my kids attend, protesting something as easy to do, life-saving, was wearing a mask. Hours before, I held a mom as she lay on the ground and begged for her child's life. I'm in an N95 for 12 hours a day, so is every other medical professional. If wearing a mask is the most oppressed you've felt in your lifetime, I urge you to reconsider your priorities. Months ago, we were healthcare heroes, and now our opinions and experiences are ignored. To have the medical professions, professionals that have spoken to the board questioned is ridiculous. None of you are medical experts. It's time to listen to those that are. I've heard on more than one occasion, members of the board state that COVID doesn't affect children, that they heard this from a podcast. This is unequivocally false. Ask the family of this child and so many others. Ask any pediatric intensive care nurse. Ask the 98% of doctors who are vaccinated against this miserable virus. It's deplorable that our community has gotten to this point, that healthcare professionals can't get up and speak without being yelled at, harassed, or called names. The mask mandate is over in a month, regardless of how any of us feel. Kids will not be required to mask. Why are we still talking about this? For the protesters, you've gotten what you've asked for. Now it's time to be quiet and move forward. When you have teachers barely hanging on, students struggling, and not enough staff members, why are you giving your time and energy to this very small group of people that just can't bear to wear a mask for the next five weeks? Why is this the prior, priority of the board? Silverton is better than this. We need to be together. Thank you.
Okay, will, anybody else in the room want to address the board? I saw that hand first, so we'll go that direction.
Hello, my name is Colleen Byer. I'm a Silverton community member, a mother of three. I want to talk about student masking as well. So when people question the efficacy of masks, the median health and government officials reply with mechanical predictability, quote, "The CDC says that masks, masks prevent the spread of COVID," unquote. We hear this ad nauseam as if it is utterly unthinkable to ever question the CDC. Those who support this narrative seem to be ascribing to the CDC the ex cathode infallibility that Catholics attribute to the Pope. However, science that is not allowed to be questioned is propaganda. This sort of loyalty to the CDC is religious, not scientific. I invite anyone listening to examine the studies that the CDC uses to back up their claim about masks. All of them suffer from either confounding factors or lack of a control. This is not science. There are hundreds of thousands of respected health professionals around the world who question the CDC's recommendation of using masks to stop viruses. There is also a group of nearly 1 million public health scientists and epidemiologists from places like Oxford, Stanford, Harvard, et cetera, who have signed what is called the Great Barrington Declaration. In this declaration, these scientists lay out, quote, "Grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policies, which includes masks." In our proposed policies to prevent spread of COVID, they recommend In their proposed policies to prevent spread of COVID, they recommend measures such as hand washing and staying home when sick. Nor do they recommend masking as a control to prevent the spread of COVID. Again, this is a group of one million experts. That is vastly more than the CDC, the FDA, and the NHL combined. Even a CNN regular, Dr. Lianna Wen, who was vehemently in favor of government mandates, recently stated that, quote, "There is a harm that we should be discussing of children continuing to mask," and, quote, "Masks have a cost, especially for the youngest learners." In fact, places like Brown University are beginning to link mask mandates with developmental and educational delays. I want to ask the school district, and this is not in any way personal, I'm really trying to understand the situation. If an institution gives priority to protecting itself over protecting kids, is that institution even worthy of protecting? By now, we know that is a reality, that mandatory masking harms kids. It is abusive to force a child to cover their mouth and nose to the point where they get rashes, headaches, anxiety, and social and developmental delays, et cetera. In any other time, this would be reportable abuse. I would like to -- surely we can work out a situation in which we, as a district, can facilitate the health decisions of all families, rather than violating the bodily autonomy of our students. As Silverton community members peaceably marched through the town Wednesday in support of students who do not wish to mask, we passed a middle school where a student was crying, tears of joy. Tears were rolling down her cheeks because someone in the community was standing up for her. Students are hurting now. They need the masks off now. We all know that on March 31st, this won't end. The mask mandates will be back at some point, and we know this. So I'm glad to say -- thank you.
Kevin with no last name. Does his hand raise? Daniel, if you could promote him.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I prefer to not list my address. My wife and I have two children who are in the Silverfall School District. I'm commenting tonight on a couple of different items that are tied together. First, I want to speak to the letters that Superintendent Drew has been sending out recently. The first message I'm speaking about was in reference to a mask protest in which he states that under no circumstances will we allow our district's children to be victimized in any way by adult protesters. Not only was there no evidence presented to back up that insinuation, but I find this a very ironic statement in light of the fact that our children have been victimized by unaccountable bureaucrats, and Superintendent Drew has, to my knowledge, never stood up to those bureaucrats privately, much less publicly, like he did here. The second message was sent late last week in reference of students and citizens who apparently are attempting to hold staff members accountable to the same rules that schoolchildren are being forced to follow. Again, I find the outrage from Superintendent Drew to be ironic and insulting. Where is the outrage when staff members are forcing children to leave the school for the day for not wearing a mask, or sit outside in near-freezing weather if they don't want to wear a mask? This same message preaches civility, but there is some civil about what the board and Superintendent Drew are allowing our children to be subject to. Every single one of you know, and have for quite some time, that face masks are not effective. Children are, by and large, not significantly affected by the virus, and that the harm from what is going on is greater than any good that is coming from this policy. If you have even a single question on this statement, go look up the John Hopkins Study on lockdowns, as well as look at all of the other states that have not been locked down for the last school year, see how they're faring compared to us. This begs the question, why are you allowing this to happen? Is it the over $5 million the district received from the federal government with strings attached to it, or is it because you are personally scared for your job? Either choice is incredibly disappointing. If you're unable to make choices that affect our children, why are you here? Why are we paying administrators, Kate Brown, and other bureaucrats who are making all the decisions, and you're merely figureheads that cannot make a decision for our children? Thank you.
My name is Carl Detweiler. I reside at 4731 Brush Creek, Silverton, Oregon. I have several children in the school district. I want to give you -- or thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. This last week has been an eye-opener for me. My daughter, that I support and love, wanted to take a stand against a mandate that does not provide choice. I peacefully marched to the school in support of my daughter with other respected community members. When I arrived, I was met by a few board members that I was able to have an appreciative and respectful conversation with. As we move forward, I just want to encourage all of you board members to support mass If the mandates get lifted, I would like to remind everyone you can still wear a mask. We will not judge you for your choice. We will just be glad you have one. That is the point of freedom of choice. While you're comfortable where you are, we are also comfortable with moving on with our lives. So you stay safe, and I'll stay free. Thank you.
Is there somebody else?
Jordan Booth, UTH.
Jordan, you said? Daniel, did you hear me? Can you promote Jordan?
It's Jordan Booth?
UTH.
Can you have them raise their hand, because there's a hundred and forty-four people, and I --
Sorry, I thought somebody was -- did they email you? Is that -- okay, yeah. Can you raise your hand in the Zoom?
Daniel, he just did.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Jordan Booth, and I prefer not to share my address. I'm a parent of a preschooler, and I recently heard from a parent of a high school student about a gathering of adults at the high school protesting mask-wearing. I was alarmed at the students' experience of intimidation by adults on a closed campus, resulting in students going home rather to school after feeling unsafe, having adults pressuring them to remove their masks. I know mask-wearing protects our neighbors, our community, and, most importantly, our vulnerable individuals during this pandemic, and currently, this is supported by our state's mask mandate. I understand there are contentious beliefs in the community around mask-wearing, but the schoolyard is not a place for this debate. When I am in public spaces and people protesting the mask mandate by not wearing masks in required spaces, I feel unsafe when they are in my personal space and threatened. For a student in school, people anti-masking would take the form of bullying by making others feel unsafe by their behavior. We have a short five weeks before we get to unmask and have -- just to wait out this last segment of time and decide when numbers are safer. Till then, I believe it's our responsibility to protect those most vulnerable but to the virus by wearing masks. And as a parent of a four-year-old who is happily masked and is not -- yeah, it seems like we can do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw you with the black mask. Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's who I saw first. Well, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Johnny Lewis. I'd just like to say that I'm one of the two students who goes to these protests and marches and documents them to send them to the town paper. I have been harassed at these protests by multiple of the people there. Two boys, I think, came up to me. They mockingly asked me, like, oh, what are your pronouns, something like that. And, you know, I tried to talk to one of the, like, active members in the protest and, you know, tell them, hey, this stuff happened, and they just told me, you know, I don't think that's plausible. I don't think -- our group doesn't condone bullying. So I showed them the proof, since I was there, I took video, and they -- you know, I asked them, could you, like, exclude these members, you know, or at least let people know that this is going on? And they just said, you know, it's not in their power. They can't prevent them from doing that. That's really all I have to say. Thank you. Just, you know, this is going on.
Any other hands raised? I'll keep bouncing back and forth. Okay.
Hi, my name is Grace Peyton. I'm a junior at Silverton High School. I organize the January 20th walkout in support of student safety advocacy and basically just keeping everybody safe at our school. I am pretty in support of masks, seeing as I organize a walkout around it, but I just -- I have always erred on the side of caution. I feel that that's the best way to go. That's what my family's always taught me, and it's what I believe in. And I think when it comes to the mask mandate, options are always necessary, but when it's about somebody else's safety, I think we might as well do what we can. I have friends with disabled family members who are in the district, who are worried about when the mask mandate is lifted and it becomes optional at our schools. How safe will their family members be? I know multiple students who are concerned about their immunocompromised family members who wear masks. I believe a lot of us that I've talked to, and I know a lot of us that I've talked to, wear masks not because we're scared necessarily for ourselves, but we do it for other people, and we do it for those who are more vulnerable than ourselves. And in my mind, anything we can do to keep people safe, even if it is something as some people believe silly is wearing a mask, I'll do it. And I think that that should be the option that most people err on, but it's not, and I see that. But, yeah, I just -- the students are worried, and I just wanted to say something so you know the students are definitely listening and watching. I've heard from so many in the last month, and I hope to see more of them get involved. And they're concerned about this and concerned about safety. It's not just a parent, community member, everything like that. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for giving us all the chance to talk. My name is Peggy Hart. I live in Silverton. I have a couple of things to say. One is to confirm what was just said, and it's true that my understanding is that masks don't necessarily protect us, but the purpose and effectiveness is that the masks protect the other person. And I think that's a part of freedom, is to care for other people. That's one thing. Someone mentioned that the mask mandate was from the state, was something manufactured or put out by a faceless bureaucrat, and my understanding is that elected officials make these decisions. That's part of freedom, too. Thirdly, is about substitutes. I've substituted in other schools, big-city schools, and I'm afraid to substitute here because I have to be polite to the kids, but also because I'm older, and it probably would mean I wouldn't be able to see my friends. And I have close friends who are physically vulnerable, and it would be a choice that would deprive me of their company. But also statistically, for the people who keep track of that kind of thing, maybe the reason that there aren't very many substitutes is because it is something that older people do, and it's -- it would be a risk and a difficult decision for me to go back and do it. I'd like to, but I'm not sure I'm ready to, and it should be factored in, that if the mandate is lifted, it may make the substitute situation worse. And I hear the teachers, and I want to come back and do it, and I just don't know whether I can. So thanks very much.
I feel a little left out. I'm not going to talk about masks. My name's Kirsten Lithwait. I live on Edison Road. I have two kids in the Silverfall School District. And what I wanted to talk about, actually, was the high turnover of principals in the district. By my count, my kids go to Robert Frost. They have had four principals and one or two interim principals in less than two years. I've heard similar numbers for Silvercrest. I know that two changes were recently announced as well at Prattum and Central Howell. That's five or six leadership changes for teachers, staff, and students. And so if you can imagine that, that's your boss changing every few months. You would not have consistent expectations for your position. You wouldn't know where you should be prioritizing your time, because just as you get to know one leader, they're gone. This level of turmoil distracts our teachers from being able to focus on being the best teachers they can be for our students. It hurts particularly those K through five kids that develop strong relationships with their principals, and they don't understand why there's change in turnover. It also -- to Allison's numbers, which, by the way, were shocking, it's going to make it a lot harder to attract the best teachers and administrators if there's a perception that the Silverfall School District is not a great place to work. It's easy to explain away individual cases, but at this point, the principals leaving their positions in the district is a pattern. And when that pattern emerges, it's time to look at the administration and key leadership and start to ask some questions as to why these individuals are opting to leave. People that love their job and are respected and feel supported don't just pick up and leave. And so my biggest question is, more importantly, what can we do to ensure that we are hiring and retaining top talent for those positions? As a parent in the district, my ask to the board here is to work with the administration to share with staff and parents detailed information around hiring, coaching, and performance management practices. To be clear, I am not asking for any information about any individuals. I'm not asking for any personnel situations or justifying why some people were raided. I don't have any interest in that. This is, more broadly speaking, the processes and practices. In the spirit of the transparency that I'm asking for, I did have the opportunity to spend forty-five minutes today with Mr. Drew and Mr. Bush on this topic. It was incredibly informative, and it did provide me with a lot of information on the resources that are provided to principals and the processes around performance management. But I asked Mr. Drew, and I asked the board tonight, to share that information more broadly with parents and with the staff. Without this level of transparency, it is leaving open wide gaps for assumptions, gossip, and hearsay. For the board's information, some of the questions that I posed to Mr. Drew and Mr. Bush today, are exit interviews being conducted once principals and staff choose to leave the district, so we can understand that pattern and improve on it. What are the goals and being given to principals? Are those measurable and actionable? When there are performance management concerns, how are those being documented and tracked? And what is the plan that those individuals are given to respond to and perform on their performance? What resources and coaching are the principals being given? And is the staff being rounded on to provide their feedback on their leadership, as well as is there an ombudsman for anonymous feedback? I was fortunate to get some answers to these questions today, but I ask that a more holistic and broader communication be shared with parents and staff. Thank you.
Dan, while she's coming up, do we have any other hands up?
No hands.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. My name is Jen Jacobson-Bruce, and I live in Silverton. And I'm here to tell you, I have a quote, what a true leader is. "A true leader must have enough backbone to stand alone, even when the crowd wants to take the easy road home. A true leader cannot be dependent on companionship for his or her security, but must learn to trust in God alone." I'm here in support of the students who are wanting freedom of choice. Every adult in this room can learn from them. These students are receiving more of an education standing up for their rights than sitting in a classroom of indoctrination. There are adults in this room that care more about their social status than standing for what is right. Schools care more about ensuring their additional S or funds than doing what is best for our children. These youth that are standing are not people-pleasers, nor do they seek human approval. They don't get their identity by social acceptance, something we all can learn from them. These kids are our future leaders, and we need to encourage critical thinking, not just talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a mask.
I appreciate it, thanks.
My name is Reagan, and I'm a parent in Silver Falls School District. And my daughter would have been starting her high school year this year. But I'm part of the probably, I think, 30% of people who pulled their kids out of school and chose not to subject them to an unnecessary, unuseful, unproven, unscientific medical device strapped to their face, coercing them to participate or they're not going to be able to go to school. Participate in a medical experiment, or they can't participate in school. Which is not only unlawful, it's unethical, and it's wrong. And every person here knows it. And I'm here supporting the kids. I hear a lot of talk about, oh, the adults and whatever. This is about the kids. We're at a school, this is about what's best for the kids. And if you are going to continue, there's multiple widely reported stories out. Documentation about the harms of mask wearing. Sitting in a mask eight hours a day, long-term. It's widely reported on, it's widely documented. So if you guys are going to continue to force kids to wear his mask, where's your proof? One, that masks work. Where's your proof? Where's your documentation that this is good for kids? And now that it's been proven that there is a lot of harm in long-term mask wearing, who's going to be held liable for the damage done to these kids? That's what I want to know.
Thank you. Are there any more, any hands up online? We've got maybe time for, let's say, one or two more at most.
My name is Zach. I'm a junior, that goes to here. And basically, kids learn how to interact with other people based on facial configurations, facial expressions and all that. People also with mental health issues and on the autism spectrum learn to interact with people based on facial expressions. And it seems weird that you just masked that up and covered it. There are countless cases where kids are brought out of abuse due to teachers noticing the distress on the kid's face. You can't see that, it gets covered up. When the fire spread through Oregon in 2020, it was said that smoke particles can slip through the mask. Yet coronavirus particles are over 417 times smaller than an oxygen molecule. And if a bigger molecule can get through, I guarantee you a smaller one can also. So that's all I have to say.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Hi there, my name's Jenny Rogers. And I'm a parent in the district. I have a daughter here at the high school. I'm also a nurse in the community, I live in Silverton. And I, it sounds funny to say, but I'm kind of in the middle on this and I can see both sides. Personally, I look forward to masks being gone. I hope that the mask mandate is lifted because we've been doing this for two years. And if you're not wearing your mask correctly and also washing your hands and doing other things, it's not going to be effective in that way. And so, but I also see the, at this point, see the value in we have to, we follow the rules until they're lifted and we do our best to protect each other. I appreciate all of the comments. I appreciate Carl Detweiler's perspective and each of the kids that shared. I really appreciate everybody's being able to stand up for what they think is right. And I think that there's value in that. I also appreciate the woman who spoke for the nurse about the child dying of COVID, which really gets our hearts. But nurses comfort people, parents all the time whose kids die in a car accident, a drug overdose, alcohol, poison, all kinds of things that we're not going to, you know, those are just examples all the time as nurses that were comforting parents for tragic things. And I just hope that adults can set good examples for our kids and that we can come together to really do what's best for the kids and for our, for our community. And when it comes to, you know, it's hard with, to have this going on. And I just think that we should think about treating everyone with kindness and respect and also treat others how we want to be treated. It kind of goes back to that when we look at this. And so I just hope that the mask mandate is lifted. But I hope if that happens, that we, everyone has the freedom to still wear their mask and not be condemned for it. And I just hope that we can respect each other's choices in all of those areas. And I just, I know it's difficult for you guys as well. And I also appreciate Mrs. Stolffus's comments about teachers being burned out. I recognize that, I'm sure they are. It's got to be a really hard time to be a teacher. I think students are burned out and parents are burned out in some of the areas too. And so I just hope that we can all come together really and do what's best. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to wrap it up there. We have a lot left on the agenda, including a discussion about masking coming up. And so I'm going to continue us on. Appreciate everybody's comments, thank you. All right, so that's going to take us to administrator and staff retorts. And Mr. Scott Drew is up first.
I'm going to come up here, John. Good evening, board. This is a winner check-in for evaluation. And I just want to start off by saying that one of the expectations that we have of our leaders here, in fact, if you've been to our Summer Leadership Institute, you know expectation number one is that we model giving and receiving feedback. And so while most superintendents do their evaluations in private in an executive session, you know I've been really adamant that my evaluation be done in public, including check-ins and receiving feedback. Cannot expect our leaders, who are in the trenches every day working with their staffs and supporting their staffs to give feedback and receive feedback from their staffs. I'm not leading the way as well. So thank you for allowing me this time to do this in open session. And really, this is a review of sort of where we are as a school district. And then of course, you know that we have superintendent goals that are put together by COSA and OSBA. And so I've done my best to kind of mesh those two together, so it's less confusing. But I'll just start out with what our focus is as a district. Of course, we know that we have a district strategic plan with three goals. And that started with the board at the time, a couple of years ago. Went through listening sessions and all of that to develop what the mission is of the school district and the three goals that go along with that. And so I don't need to tell you that first two goals are instructional. And then we have this third goal that is very unusual for a school district, and that's around facilities. And I'll get to that in a minute. But the facilities piece is our most dire challenge ahead of us. We have the end in sight for masks. I know it's been a tremendous challenge for all of us, for everybody involved. And I'll be talking about that a little bit later. But the facilities piece is one that is, that we're in dire need of addressing. And it makes up one-third of our goals. And you heard Brett Davison speak about the needs of his building as well. If you look to the right, the focus really comes from the district strategic plan. And then, and then I've put it in a visual to make it easily understood. And really, what we've done here as a leadership team in terms of our hedgehog concept, which if you remember, are the three concentric circles about what we're passionate about, what we think we can be the best in the world at, and then what drives our support engine from our community, from our staff, from our stakeholders. And where we want to be, of course, is right in the middle there, where all those three meet. And so the two things that really drive what we're doing and make the most impact in terms of adult actions are feedback and teamwork. And if you see there, the effect sizes, the research is indisputable on just how important giving feedback and receiving feedback is. If you know something about effect sizes, you know that a .4 effect size is as much as one year worth of student growth. And a 1.6 effect size is, Jennifer?
Four years?
Four years of growth. And so we see that in feedback. You see an effect size of .73, but then you see times four with teacher collective efficacy, which is just a fancy word for teamwork. And so really, it's those two adult actions that we try to infuse in our work every day in Silver Falls School District. And one of the things that I've been working on as your superintendent is how do we take that strategic plan and then operationalize it down into, into pieces that all work together to address these three goals. And you know that I came to you at the beginning of the year with these goals and I laid out what the key strategies were going to be and how we were going to measure those. You approved that. And now it's all about making sure that the rest of our leaders clearly understand what their role is in achieving those goals as well. So that they can impart that focus back to their staffs and then out to our community. And one of the ways that we're able to evaluate our progress as leaders in this district really comes from the new leadership evaluation system that we've implemented. So we've implemented the Marzano Leadership Evaluation Framework. We're right in the middle of our mid-year principal check-ins, which is a lot like how we're doing it here. Where principals come and they report out on topics that, that they're responsible for. And we'll get to our directors right after that. Dan Bush, our Assistant Superintendent, he is being evaluated off the same goals as I am. And so that's more the office of the superintendent. But really, the promoting and the connection of these three goals around our curriculum work really is the majority of where we spend our time. There are a lot of other things that we can get wrapped up in, details, other minutia. But I would say the teaching and learning piece is really the most central part of our strategic plan. And really, what that has to do with is the curriculum mapping piece that we've been involved in for the second consecutive year. And I think you've heard that throughout the principal reports, that it's going well, it's going slow, but that's to be expected. Last year, we were able to map out all of the standards that we are responsible for teaching so that we know how much we need to teach, given a set of instructional days in a school year. And this year, we've broken those standards into units and we're mapping those units during our P L C time in our early release. That is really important to understand. And one of the points I want to try to make here is that we know kids are coming to us with greater need. We know that. I don't need to even show you data to tell you that kids' needs have never been higher. But that also means, and what you heard from Allison Stolffus earlier, is that the work has never been harder. So students' needs have never been greater, the work has never been harder. And so in order to do that work, we also know that it's collaboration that makes the difference. Remember 1.6 effect size, four years of growth in one year. That's where the power is in teamwork and collaboration. And so if we're to continue refining our instructional practice, whether we're practitioners in front of kids in classrooms or instructional leaders, making sure that our teachers have the resources to be successful, then we have to have protected time. And we have that now. Thankfully, we've had that as a district. We have 12 days. 12 days in one school year is not enough. We need to make sure that we're protecting this time for our staffs to do the work. And, and so this year, the P L C time that we do have has been really focused on the unit mapping piece. One of our principals mentioned how important teacher-developed assessments are. We are right in the precipice of starting that work. Our assessment cadres start this summer. Every single staff member eventually in Silver Falls will receive 30 hours of assessment literacy training, writing assessments to standards as a team. So that we have common assessments in the district and we can zero in on exactly what the needs are of our students, given the data. That's where the majority of our time is being spent, as I said. And we also know that the most effective professional development framework we can have is one that's job embedded. And so we embed that professional development in the P L C time. We work with a group called Educational Excellence. They are considered the gold standard in standards-based framework development and professional development and coaching. And my hope is that when we get there, we'll be able to add in another set of P L C, P L C early release days as well. One of the other things we've tried to do throughout the pandemic, and it would be so easy for me to sit up here and explain away why we're not doing the work of opening up our practices, but we've really strived to make sure that we're listening to our communities. As you know, and some of you were involved in the early work, the K eight listening sessions, the K eight work group, that translated into seven independent and separate listening sessions that we had, asking the community about their needs, not only for facilities, but also their needs with regard to what is going on in the world around us. And the data that we collected has helped us steer sort of the direction for the district as well, not just for facilities. We will be coming to in-town schools later this spring to finish that out. And the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee has finished its report, a culmination of three years' worth of work that you'll vote on tonight. Also, I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate you being actively engaged as a board. And as you know, I send you a written report every week. I think it was a couple of updates ago that I outlined just how involved our board is in the work groups that we have here. And you can see those outlined here. There's no way we could do this work without you. With the amount that we have on our plate, being a very small central office, we rely on you heavily to help us with your areas of expertise. And right now, those of you who are on the music education work group, that's our next one meeting, I believe it's in a week. And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a plan for Silver Falls to bring music education to our K eight schools. But that'll be decided by a work group that's heavily weighted with K eight stakeholders. We're also working on a new K 12 Student Code of Conduct that we haven't had in the district. And I'm really grateful for that team as well, that team of teachers and instructional assistants, just to name a few of what we have going on right now. And there's also this policy work group. I think all told, the amount of policies that will be updated within last year, which, from last year to this year. I think Debbie, if I'm not mistaken, are we at 260? So 260 policies will have been updated. And I am forever indebted to the community members who are on that work group. Again, that work would have taken us years to update our district policies had it not been for stakeholders stepping up and volunteering their time.
Hey guys, I'm going to ask that to adhere to policy, we need to have a mask on in this room for this meeting. I see a few people. I see a few people in the back. Please, there's a mask by the door. I'd appreciate if you'd comply. I know how you feel, but I'd really appreciate it.
One of the things that I continue to learn a lot about is the financial instability that we're in right now. Steve Nielsen will talk to you about that in greater depth when it's his turn to address the board. I think the most troubling thing to us right now is that our enrollment decline has not changed. So it was down 10% a year ago, it's down 10% today. And our hope was to get at least 60% back from that number, but that number has not moved. And so you can imagine the type of challenges that we're faced with, especially because 85 to 90% of a district's operating budget is wrapped up into what, Aaron? What is 85 to 90% of our operating budget?
Personnel.
Personnel, very good. Gold star for you today. And so we're trying to staff the district right now. So we're working with principals right now to figure out how many staff we have, how many positions we have available, to see if we're overstaffed or understaffed. And that's really hard to do when you don't have an exact number to shoot for. Yes, our state revenues are at an all-time high. That's really astonishing to me, but the good news keeps rolling in there. The problem is that this is the first time that Silver Falls School District has ever had a sustained decline in enrollment. We've always been a positive net-in district. And so that poses all sorts of challenges for us. And I just want to recognize Steve Nielsen for really helping us understand why we need to tighten our belts in the district, why we have hiring freezes on some positions. And so important to have that voice at the table to sort of consistently give us that picture. Right now, we're also working on revamping how we resource our schools. And in the past, schools have been resourced more in a dollar-based model. But we're moving to a different unit, which is called, we call it FTE, which is a staffing unit. And so we're working with principals on how to staff our schools using FTE and how to standardize the resources across the district to say, every school in Silver Falls will have a principal, every school in Silver Falls will have a secretary in the main office, every school in Silver Falls will have at least this number of teachers, given this number of students. We call that a student-to-teacher ratio. So we're working through that this week, actually, with each of our principals. The reason is, we have to get to a place where our schools are being resourced at a systems level so we know that, say, the allocation of these resources are equitable. So up until last year, we only had a couple of schools that actually offered PE. That's the only subject area that's mandated by the state. And so that's just one of the many reasons why we have to be looking at this from a systems level to make sure that we're ensuring that if a kiddo goes to one of our schools in Silver Falls, they're going to get a similar educational experience, given the resources that we have, which may look different, school community to school community, but it won't be that they don't get something because of the lack of resources in their building. The other things related to financial management, of course, for me, go back to facilities. And that, again, the baton was passed back to the board with the Long Range Facilities Planning Report. And now it is on the seven of you, plus me, to determine a pathway forward on how we're going to address that. And that is a conversation for another time, but it's a conversation we will definitely be having. And the last thing I just wanted to wrap up with is more of a thank you to each of you. The seven of you have bent over backwards to support me and to support our team here in Silver Falls. Your involvement in our work, your advice and expertise has been unprecedented. I wouldn't have it any other way. There are some downsides to opening up our practice, but I don't see any of those downside that isn't a lasting benefit to how we do things. You get a better idea of how things are done behind the scenes, how decisions are made, and we benefit from your expertise. Jonathan and Jennifer and I, along with Dan Bush, our Assistant Superintendent, meet every week. And that's just to go over the general impacts of the pandemic and other crisis-related things, but also it's just to keep up to date and keep that link between the board and the office of the superintendent. I'm extremely grateful for that. And I know I can speak for Dan as well. And the last thing I wanted to say is that what started out as kind of a lighthearted hashtag of no surprises, I've really appreciated that all of you have taken that on as your own mantra. Because to me, what it speaks more to is this idea of being highly professional and highly collaborative, that we model giving and receiving feedback, not just board to superintendent, but superintendent back to board, sometimes superintendent back to individual board members, sometimes individual board members back to the superintendent. And that all starts with our operating agreement. I'm so thankful that we have the board dynamic that we have. We may not always agree on every little thing, but what we strive for, and I know I speak for all of you, is that we want what's best for Silver Falls School District. And at the end of the day, the best idea always wins. And I just wanted to end with that. So thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question as much as a comment. You asked us all to reflect on things we were proud about as board members. And one of the things, and I've said it before, I'm a broken record. The policy work group has been a really big change that has been instituted over the last year, year-plus. And I think it's been really effective. And I just wanted to say kudos to you and Dan for heading that group up and especially the volunteers and their giving of that work. It's been super effective and great teamwork. So thanks again.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, I'll say, on that note of reflecting on some positives, as part of the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, when Scott, this past summer, really wanted to answer that key question about what do our K-8 communities desire for the future? And to take a lot of time to go out to those communities, ask very open questions and have open forums with well-attended communities, that took a lot of time and leadership on your part. And I appreciate you for doing that. You know, I was part of that. And to hear a lot of the communities say, "We really feel like we were listened to", that's a big, big step forward in really uniting our district. It's just the start, it's just the beginning. But I appreciate your leadership in really taking the step to go the extra mile to listen to the communities and our K-8 communities. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks, Scott. Yeah, I would say the work on the long-range facilities, I would just echo Aaron's statement. I got a question. You talked about all the unit mapping and the standards. Is that something that will be publicly available then, when it's done?
Yes. Excellent question, Tom.
The reason I asked that, I've been, you know, I'm sitting in a tractor a lot, listening to lots of podcasts about current events. Lots of parents are reading lots of school boards about curriculum and what's being taught their kids. They don't know what's being taught. And, you know, they get stories, they read something online, something's happening in Virginia, or California, or Washington, or whatever. And, you know, they're concerned that's, maybe that's happening there. They hear a story that's happening here. So, you know, I've kind of had a couple of conversations with you about this. So if this is online, you know, parents can see, this is what my kid's going to encounter in their class all day long. You know, all this term, this period. Many school boards are wrestling with their, all over the country, wrestling with trying to do this, and they're getting pushback from teachers. But here, we're doing it. And it's going to be publicly available so people can get a sense of what's going on in their class. You might get a sense of, that's a topic that's going to cause me some concern, and I can talk to a teacher about it, or administration or somebody. But we're trying to get what's, Scott's trying to get what's taught in public, what's getting taught in the classes in public, so everybody can have a look at it. And that's one of those things that's, people don't know what's going on, and that might help to bring some people back. Maybe we'll get, you know, maybe we'll get some confidence about what's going on in schools. People will be reassured, they can communicate their concerns. And I really appreciate that work. And I was glad to hear that, stories I was hearing about school boards and districts struggling with that, you're just doing it. You were just doing it already. And I thought that was, I love it. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it.
That's going to help.
I really appreciate that, Tom. I think, what I appreciate even more is a board member wanting to talk about instruction. And so thank you, Tom. I really appreciate your kind words. And yes, we are striving for a guaranteed and viable curriculum for all kids, so it doesn't matter which teacher a child is assigned, they're going to receive the same high-quality education because our teachers plan together in teams and that we teach to standards that have been already mapped. And in those units, teacher teams tell us how the instruction will look. And because they're the experts, they are the ones that know best. As administrators and instructional leaders, it's just important to us that we provide the resources so they're able to be successful. Protected time would be one. I hit on that earlier. But yes, eventually, we will have, all of our maps will be public. We are public employees. We teach the public. We teach to standards, common core state standards. And those standards are mapped right now. After we're done mapping the units, we will make all of that available to the public. Because our entire public should know what it is that we are teaching and assessing by grade level.
Yeah.
And so that's why, that's why we're so focused on this work now.
Yeah. I mean, it might, you know, people still might have concerns about what's being taught, but it'll hopefully eliminate the surprise.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Yes. Just like we have standards of what to teach, they are directives. We don't have a choice on whether or not we teach to standards. Those are the standards, and our job is to teach to them. But our job also is to make sure that we're being open and transparent with our public as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you. You've got a couple more things you're going to share with us?
So I'll go back to, we'll transition to board zone redistricting, if you will. This has been a bit of an education for me as well. And board zone redistricting is done every 10 years, given the census data. And we have partnered, we are contracted with Mid-Wilamette Valley Council of Governments. This organization redistricted Silver Falls in the 2000 census and the 2010 census. So there's been some history there. And they are going to do the redistricting for 2020. We're not talking about major changes either, but we've had some population growth in areas of the district. And when that census data will help us get a better idea of where those boundary adjustments will be for the seven zones. We've gone with the services in sort of maybe think of it as a package. And I've sent all this to you before. We have analysis of the current boundaries. And then in the end, what I will bring back to you are three alternatives. So three scenarios that you will pick and you'll choose as a board, the way you'd like, whichever one of the three you feel is most appropriate. And this organization takes care of all the production of the final maps and then the data export to the county clerk and all of that. Right now, we're waiting for the precinct geography data. And once we get that, or once they get access to that, then we'll know a specific timeline for completion. So I'll come back to you probably in the next board meeting, let you know exactly when that will be. Any questions on that?
None here. None for me, anyway. Anybody else?
Pretty straightforward.
And Jonathan, I'm looking at the agenda. Am I next on?
I think you were going to give just a general update.
We have Steve coming up or other reports? I just can't.
Well, so he's going to come up after you.
So my next topic would be the mask mandate.
I think it's just not.
Would you like to address that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me.
Lori trying to say something?
I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lori.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Very good. I had a question about the zoning, because this is new for me. Is it, is it in regards to zoning for the schools? For the school that represents the zone itself? Or is it just for, I don't know, for election? Or does it handle both? Does that make sense? Like, if you live in a certain area, this would be your school or something like that? Is this what this is helping us understand better now after 10 years?
Lori, I think it's, I think it's just adjusting the board, the elected board zone. So it's taking into account the data from the census and adjusting those boundaries accordingly so that all the zones are balanced out.
Oh, very good. Okay, well, thank you.
It doesn't change the board zones, it doesn't take any away. It's just adjusts what's already there.
And to be clear, it does not impact school attendance zone boundaries. This is a board, an elected board zone boundary adjustment based on the census.
Oh, very good. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, the difference, if there was a difference. Sounds like this is simply for election dates.
Okay, I am going to move down to the COVID updates, which is the mask mandate ending on March 31st. And so why don't I just start with that? There is, there is a difference between the mask mandate ending for businesses and the mask mandate ending for schools. Don't ask me why. There are a lot of different reasons, I guess. I was in a superintendent's meeting last week, and the fact of the matter remains that right now, for right now, even if the mask mandate is lifted for businesses, we still have a hard date of March 31st. So that's where we are right now. That, to me, is challenging on a number of different levels, but I've talked to each of you individually and you sort of, I think I've conveyed my feelings on that. I also know, having been going, having gone into the pandemic as a principal of a school of 1,000 students, and now in my second year as a superintendent, still in the same pandemic, that anything could change. One thing, though, I'm confident in is that the mask mandate will not go beyond March 31st. I don't have any hard data for you, but I can tell you that, that that's a date everybody is planning on already. So the school mask mandate will return to local control as of March 31st. But per the federal requirements, masks will still remain a requirement on the bus as we do receive federal funds. Now, our intent as Silver Falls School District, our intent is that masks will become optional as of March 31st. as of March 31st. So effective that date, masks will become optional. And the reason why they will become optional is because we will have assumed local control. The reason why I'm coming to you right now with this is I need your blessing so that I can move forward with our staff on developing a plan for how this will look. And so if you see in that section down below, working on the following issues. Number one is we need to work on an updated RSSL plan. That's the resiliency framework. That's a large document, it's something that we will be working on because certain mitigation factors will still need to be in place even though masks are optional. And the second thing is what do we do if there's an exposure with someone who's unvaccinated? I want to be really clear on this part, though, because I know there are a lot of questions. And that is, when we say masks are optional, we mean for all kids. So we don't, we don't have a way to track that, nor, nor would we even have the resources to do that. What, what we know, though, is that we will have mitigation practices that will need to stay in place in case there's an exposure to an unvaccinated individual, which also brings up the quarantining concept and contact tracing. So I'll come back to you at a later date with how that will look. I'll have a much better idea as we dig into this. What I will tell you is that if principals' plates weren't already full to begin with, they will become more full as of the 31st. So I just want to be able to say publicly that, at least for me as a superintendent, I owe our principals a debt I will never be able to fully repay. In my opinion, along with the teachers, they are the heroes of this entire pandemic, making everything work. They are the backbone of Silver Falls School District. And our job is to come up with a plan that, that works for our principals and that's efficient enough to where they are able to get their jobs done. But if this answers your basic questions, number one, how does the mask mandate differ from the non-school mask mandate? Those two dates could be different. March 31st could be the same date for businesses also, but if that's earlier, it'll be for indoor mask mandates as they relate to business. The school is firm right now, that's what we've been told by Oregon Department of Education. I was on the phone with COSA, Coalition of Oregon School Administrators, which is our professional organization, with their executive director and letting them know my, my sincere concerns about the problems that that poses, having two separate dates. And I was assured personally by the executive director, Craig Hawkins, that he would take that directly to ODE. And I am not alone in that either. So you understand the difference there. You understand our intent, which is to make masks optional as of the 31st. And I will come back to you in subsequent meetings with an update on our plan. And then, to be clear, when we say optional masks, that means for all students. That we are not going to be checking in on which students are, what students need to wear a mask, it's optional for all. And we also know that we will have students who prefer to wear a mask, and that's fine too. And we will make sure that our students understand that and our families understand that. Any questions there?
Yeah, Scott, I can't, there was, it sounds like there's an issue that hasn't been fleshed out. Perhaps I didn't hear properly. There was something about contact with an unvaccinated student or some sort of, there's a differentiation of?
So the practice hasn't changed. The practice right now is if students, if an individual is vaccinated, they don't quarantine.
If? They don't quarantine if, for what? If they get exposed?
If they get exposed. If an individual gets exposed and they're vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine. And that's been our practice all along. And that practice has been, been given to us. That is not a decision we made, that was a decision that was made for us.
Yeah, I understand.
And with the information we have now, that has not changed. And so, when we have an exposure, our nurses are the ones that communicate with families on that.
Is there been any update from ODE, what defines vaccinated? Sorry. Here's a bomb for you.
No, it's not a bomb, it's not a bomb, Tom. I don't, I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
It's, I think the terminology is fully vaccinated.
Okay.
So that's vaccinated and boosted.
Okay.
Only for students who are 18.
Yes.
They must be boosted if they're 18. If they're under 18, a booster shot is not required at this point to count as fully vaccinated.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay. Is that, is that staff too? Is that, is that definition of life first?
For, so for staff, adults, it would be vaxxed and boosted.
Same thing, fully vaxxed, okay, got it. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question, kind of piggybacking on Tom's. You had mentioned students, unvaccinated students, or no, when it comes to 31st, students, no matter what, masking is optional. Is that the same for staff as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Dan, would you like to say anything on that topic?
Yes.
And that is the same for unvaccinated or vaccinated staff? They'll have the option to wear a mask?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what Tom said there brought to mind, has there been any discussion about when we might no longer be required to, to do the contact tracing and, you know, when the resilience framework will start to change?
As much as I'd love to say yes, Owen, I haven't heard anything. It's just, it's continuing with the, with the current practice on that and I will make a note of that and if I get information, I'll put it in my updates at the next work session. That's okay.
One more other question.
Go right ahead, Aaron.
I mean, I bombard you with questions you may not have the answers to yet, but it's something that you can take up the chain is, I understand that there's no test to stay when the mask mandate becomes, or the masking becomes optional. Is that true?
That is true.
And what's the rationale behind that? I'm having a hard time understanding that one.
I'm going to defer that to Leslie Roach, who has dealt in depth with the testing piece.
So, OHA and ODE believe that test to stay is most effective when it's layered with multiple mitigation steps. And so, if masks and physical distancing aren't in place, then they say that test to stay does not count. So if students are wearing masks at school, they would qualify for test to stay if they are exposed and not vaccinated. But if they are not wearing masks and unvaccinated, they would not qualify for test to stay.
So, not to weed into it too deep, but if the idea is that my mask protects you and yours protects me, does that not make absolutely zero sense?
I don't, I, I am not interpreting.
Right. Just had to say it for the record.
And an exposure is an exposure whether you're masked or not. I mean, you, you can still be exposed, especially with what's going on currently. So, I'm, I'm, like you, I'm having a hard time understanding this. Sorry.
I won't go down the rabbit hole any further.
I won't either.
So Aaron, can I make a clarifying statement to, now that I think I understood your previous question a little bit earlier about as far as all staff and whatnot, some of that, because I think you alluded to the vaccination requirement?
I was just saying, masking for either vaccinated or unvaccinated staff will also become optional on the 31st.
So all, all, every staff member who is not vaccinated has an exception and those are handled on a case by case, I mean, with each and every one of those employees and so those will likely all need to be updated, just to clarify that process.
Lots of questions. Have they given any indication of whether prior infection counts as vaccinated?
No, they have not.
They haven't indicated?
It's, it's fully vaccinated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you just, thank you.
You know, one thing that I'm going to anticipate is in the next 40 some days, we're probably going to see additional information coming out and it may or may not match what the plan of record of today is.
Well, yeah, I, I, I agree with that in that, you know, I'm peppering these questions so these are all the questions we're getting, so you can send them upstairs.
No, I, I really appreciate that, Tom, and, and I really appreciate our conversations about that, too. Like I said, though, you know, having gone through this pandemic at multiple levels in leadership, anything could happen at this point. And I, I would agree with Jonathan's statement that I would not be surprised if there is additional information that I bring back to you that I didn't know right now.
Okay.
Not a guarantee, but, but I would not be surprised if that were the case. And, and we'll make the best plan dependent on what that information tells us. Go ahead, Lori, sorry.
No, it's okay. Sometimes the relay on it is, anyway. I wanted to ask a couple questions. So it's my understanding that students will need to wear masks on the bus because of federal funding. Is that my understanding? Okay. But it will be optional as, after March 31st or as of March 31st? And if so, I guess my, I guess I have a lot of questions, too. I think one of my concerns is, is that we, we have many students that are very sensitive medically. And for our staff that works with those students, are they going to be maybe given other than surgical masks? If you're working with fragile student, say like N95 as opposed to surgical, I know some argue that one is better than the other, but I'm not sure what, how ODE and OHA feel about.
I would say we're not there yet, Lori. And for our medically fragile kids, we'll need to take each one of those in context. Certainly, our number one job as educators is to make sure that our kids are safe and for our medically fragile kids, we will be paying close attention to that and our specialized programs. So I don't have an answer for you, but that, that is part of our plan that we need to figure out.
And when is the plan due?
March 30th.
March 30th. The day before, yeah. The day before.
Is it my understanding, too, that students are not required to wear masks outdoors as long as there is proper, I guess, spacing?
Yes.
This time?
That is correct.
I'm just trying to get, it just depends if you're indoors, outdoors, what's expected at this time and how that will change. So that's what I wanted clarity on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Currently, students aren't required to wear them outside.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah.
As long as we, as long as we can ensure, as, as far as the guidance is concerned, as long as we can ensure the proper distancing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Lori, I'm so glad you asked that, asked that question about the medically fragile kids. I've had millions of questions through my head and that was in my list and you got it because we're, you're going to work with those students and those staff, parents. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm an instructor as well and so, that's just, I'm at a different level, but the expectations and understanding, it's, it is a delicate issue whether you're a parent or a teacher or whoever, you know. Yeah, for me, it's just the key to safety and good health and maintaining that because not all of us have been so gifted. And I just want to protect those that aren't with solid health at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, other questions on this? All right, we are going to move into our financial report and we're going to come back to this question here in a little bit as we get into our discussion.
Thanks, Jonathan. Just a clarification on the transportation part. It's my understanding that the CDC has a directive for public and private transportation system and that it can be federal funding, it's just a requirement of transportation federally and school buses fall under that umbrella. So that's why that would stay, is my understanding.
Hang on a second, I want to make sure that they can hear, Lori and Janet, can you hear me? Because I'm not hearing you coming through the system, is it?
Sounds like it might be on now.
Okay, there are thumbs up.
Can you hear me okay, Lori? Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Board book attachments tonight include the monthly enrollment and financial reports as well as the March 22 state quarterly economic and revenue forecast presentation, which were released last week. The first report is from the office, Oregon Office of Economic Analysis and the second is by the Legislative Revenue Office's Chris Allen Act. With regards to the state forecast, revenue continues to exceed forecast with another, another 4% increase in just the last three months. The state's reserve accounts also continue to grow and are projected to top $5 billion during the 2021-23 biennium. This is equivalent to 20% of the state general fund budget. While Oregon is in the best financial shape since the passage of Measure 5 in 1990, school district enrollment across the state has declined by nearly 30,000 students or 5.2% since the onset of the pandemic in March of 2020. Credit to COSA's Morgan Allen for some of this analysis. Silver Falls School District's enrollment remains down by 388 students compared to June 2020, a decrease of 9.8%. While the next official state school fund estimate will not be published until the week of February 28th, ODE did confirm last week that statewide school enrollment is down by 30,000 students as previously mentioned. While the statewide decrease will likely increase the amount per ADMW by $300, I've estimated that Silver Falls State School Fund revenue will be $1.4 million less than forecast, 3.4%, and $2.5 million less, 6.1%, than if enrollment had remained stable. To offset general fund losses, the district has reduced expenditures, which includes a decrease in FDE, mostly through attrition. The district also participated in the pension obligation bond offering last September with 22 other school districts, resulting in a $700,000 savings in the current fiscal year. The use of reserves will also be necessary this year as current expenditures will exceed current resources and ODE provides just 49% of the state school fund in year one of the biennium. As we construct the 2022-23 fiscal year budget, further expenditure reductions appear imminent to balance the budget moving forward. In March, I will provide an update on all funds, a report on ESAR fund expenditures to date, and a facilities department budget update. Lastly, I wanted to mention that on January 31st, the district posted an RFP for student transportation services. All the details can be found on the school district website and proposals are due back to us on March, March 4th. A review team will score the bids and will likely conduct interviews the week of March 14th. That team does include board member Tom Buchos. The board will be asked to award a contract to the winning bidder at the April 11th school board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for Steve? The enrollment popped up a bit. Do you have any sort of analysis as to why? I mean, I think it was like 11% on the last report down and now it's 9.8.
It's been down between 10 and 11% pretty much since the end of that 1920 school year. It did bump up just, just a little bit. I mean, it hit 400 or just over 400 down. But it, it, it changes day to day.
If you look at that report, you can also see Butte Creek and Central Ohio have shown some growth since a year ago, so that's a good sign for those schools.
Okay.
No.
Go ahead, Lori.
Oh, oh, yes, thank you. Steve, is there any forecast for, will we, I guess, on school, grow in their population? Or is there any hope that it will continue to grow? Is that maybe what the forecast? that maybe what the forecast is hoping? I'm sure it's hoping for it, but do you think that we'll gradually see the numbers increase?
Enrollment or the total dollars allotted to enrollment?
Enrollment.
It's hard to say. I guess we'll, you know, we'll find out, I guess, on March 31st if anything changes. But it's really, it's really, it's really hard to say at this point. We were hoping that by going to five-day in-person instruction in the fall, that there would have been some recovery, as was mentioned by somebody earlier. We did budget for about a 60% return. And of course, this was last spring when we had no idea what model we would even... service model we would even be in. But a lot of people have settled into other avenues of instruction. A lot of people have gone to homeschooling, online, previously established online charter academies, as well as private schools. And so there may be some changes at the end of March, but, you know, maybe not a... I'm not anticipating a major change for the rest of the school year either way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? With none, we are going to move into our discussion items. And the first one is, in fact, the mask mandate and the return to local control. And the board will have an opportunity to discuss that. And there is an action later on to essentially authorize the plan that Scott has outlined. So this is a conversation. At this point, it's a discussion item, and I will open up the floor to that conversation now. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go.
Go for it.
Go for it.
I rarely write things down, but I did write things down this time, so forgive me for reading. I'm just going to go into a little bit of background on my thinking from this whole year, just because I want to explain my vote. Because in my board training, that's the thing you're supposed to do, right, is explain your vote. So based on what I've read, state governors have the authority when it comes to public health. Supreme Court justice opinions cite that governors are held accountable via the ballot. And school board members, like us, are also held accountable at the ballot. But the difference is the governor has a host of public health experts to call upon for advice. School boards don't. And it's within this context that I base my thinking around requiring masks this year. If the governor is requiring it, compliance is appropriate. On the other hand, if the government is not requiring it, by what basis is a school board supposed to base its decision under local control? We've not been given metrics, and it's out of our realm of expertise to interpret infectious disease data. Therefore, my thinking has been to default to the governor's requirements, no more, no less. So as we have the option to, you know, extend masks, I would say, why? Because we don't have metrics. And so I guess that as we turn things over to Scott in terms of making a plan, that's the thinking that I have. And I am happy to hear others and be convinced otherwise, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just add, it seems like a good time to jump on because I think I want to piggyback a little bit on what Jennifer was saying. That has been my concern when this was announced from the beginning. You know, we have had OHA and ODE make these decisions for us, which I know for a lot of people was uncomfortable and not preferred. But it did get us off the hook in terms of having to make some really complex public health decisions on our own. And now, local control means that's on us now. It doesn't necessarily mean that we would, that we would make them optional. I think that's obviously where we're heading. We have to vote tonight on that. But what it means is that now we are responsible for the risk assessment, the data collection, deciding what kinds of thresholds we might implement, what we would do if we hit certain thresholds. So that's a lot. And I just, I want us as a board to, and I think we do, take that accountability and that responsibility really seriously. Because it is, it's a huge responsibility to assume. Now, having said that, the rates are going down very quickly. I'm optimistic, cautiously optimistic, that we will be in a position where we don't have to do anything radical, but we do need to be able to know what questions we have to ask. Obviously, we're going to take a lot of recommendation from our leadership team. But we also have a lot of responsibility here. And so I want to make sure that as we move forward, we don't just sort of go, hooray, it's over, it's done. But we understand that there's, this is just the beginning of a different journey, and that we have now a whole different set of decisions that we may have to confront and face and work through together. And I was really pleased to see Scott lay out the RSSL, the Ready School Safe Learners, and that we have to, that our team now has to adapt that document, come up with other ways that we might quarantine. Are we going to contact trace? What other measures could we implement? But I think as long as... I think I'm comfortable moving forward with the vote to make them optional, as long as we are going in very clear-eyed about what our responsibilities are. Because we still do, and thank you, Tom, for mentioning this as well, and Lori, we have a huge responsibility to our vulnerable students. And I want to make sure that we're being really attentive to that and very sober about that. So that's kind of, that's sort of my thinking about it.
Thank you.
I think, I think I'll jump in on the back of that, probably just as a... Because I have a different perspective on what our responsibility, I think, as a board is versus what our responsibility isn't with regard to going forward. So a couple things. One is I just really dislike the idea, and I reject it pretty much out of hand, that we can't have an opinion on a matter of public health unless we're a public health expert. People would say the same thing about lawyers. They'd say the same thing about educators, the same thing. Our world has become so specialized that there are experts in literally everything. That doesn't mean that we should think of ourselves as experts in everything or experts in nothing, but I think we need to have an informed opinion. And with regard to responsibility, I don't think that we have a different responsibility with regard to our students with regard to this disease than we have with other public health issues. I think the responsibility lies with the individuals, and that, to me, is a reason to put it back to public personal choice. I don't see us making those kind of determinations and decisions, Janet, you just talked about, with regard to literally any other... I mean, I'm not thinking of it right now, issues. And so I don't know why we would do it, why we would think that we have that heightened responsibility moving forward. You know, it seems like the government above us that has had control and has mandated to us this entire time, if they want us to do something special with special vulnerable populations, then they need to tell us what we have to do with that. You know, if we have parents that have kids that have special needs, obviously, they need to be responsible for their children to come tell us that so we can respond. So it's not very well thought out, I guess, a kind of rambling in that regard. But that's my feeling, is that we don't need to treat this really going forward any differently than we treat other diseases. And I think we... Well, I'll leave it at that. I might chime in some more later. But that's kind of what I'm feeling about it.
Sure. Yeah, I think so. I guess I'll weigh in, because you made me think of a few things. You know, one of the things that I look to today, or maybe quite a while back already, but compared to perhaps two years ago, when I think we really didn't know a lot, there's a lot of aggregate data. Now, we have two years worth of data. We have states that have gone completely from the, we're not going to mandate anything, if I can find you if you mandate anything, to states like Oregon where we mandate everything. Right? So we've got a lot of data out there. And it's very, to me, clear that the cumulative effect, the aggregate effect, is that there were not massive problems in states that behaved differently. And so I don't have any concern personally with making this an optional thing for parents and for their students. I don't have any major concerns. I do agree that, you know, we should always do our best to help somebody who is in a vulnerable state. I've known several in my life at different stages and people around them almost without fail do the right thing. And so I don't personally see that as a big issue, but maybe, maybe it is something that the district needs to look at in certain rooms with certain students. I don't know. But I guess that's kind of where I'm at, is I sort of look at the big picture, and I say, okay, well, we have a lot of data. You know, I think we've known for a fair bit of time that a simple cloth mask that isn't fitted very well has limited impact. But regardless of what I think, it doesn't really matter. I do think that I'm comfortable moving, moving this forward with an optional decision for parents at this point.
Well, Jonathan, I probably should have come out and said it just as directly as you did. I think these are ridiculous. We've known that for a long time. They're ridiculous. They don't work. I wish they did. I think I said that early on. I wish they did. But I think we've hurt ourselves far more than we've helped ourselves by wearing masks. And to me, it's unfortunate that we have had a government. We live in Oregon, and they are mandated, and we don't have a choice. So you hear all you, hear everybody in your complaints. I share them. I know not everybody on the board shares those same complaints. But again, it really is not our choice up until the 31st.
Right. It's a great point, and it's a good reminder for everybody. The board did not decide on all the mandates that are in place today. They were imposed by the state for whatever reasons they saw fit. And so that is the position we've been in, and it's a lot more complicated than, are we just after the money? I think there's a lot of dominos that fall should we have gone against it. And I think it's important to just reiterate that. Anyway, I'll let somebody else weigh in for me.
Yeah, I would like, if I may. I think some of the feeling that I have is that we are on a school board that represents one of many public school districts. And so as much as we would like to hold on to local control, which I think has greatly deteriorated probably since the 60s for a variety of reasons, where the state feels like they have to offer their input to level the playing field as much as they can, my concern came, I was feeling very confident with the numbers going down. And I thought if the numbers continue to go down, I understand why masks would become optimal. But I think when we received the wastewater testing, that indicates to us that many people, it's out there. COVID is out there. And I, I as a board member, but just personally believe in masks and its mitigation against the virus. And I do believe it's part of my personal responsibility, not only to myself and to my husband and others, but just to other people and to other human beings, not just to model. Because I truly believe in it. And I do believe it makes a difference. And I do not want to step wildly into something that could put other people at risk. And that's, I wish that we had a clear plan. From, it sounds like the school district is kind of being told what their plan is going to be moving forward, March 31st. But I would really love to know how we plan to protect those who might be exposed or are fragile, and what we can do for them and for the employees. I'm just, that's where, I was doing okay until I saw the wastewater testing. That greatly concerned me. And there is a responsibility there as a board, being that we are representing a public school. So I want to be very cautious, too, and highly sensitive about what this decision means. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lori. I think Erin, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I kind of, I share, like, with what Owen was saying, that, you know, we've all been through this pandemic together for the last two years, and we've, we're able to analyze data, each one of us personally. I'm sure every one in this room looks at data, looks at stats. We want to make good decisions for ourselves, for our children, for our, for our families. I know I do. And I think at this point, you know, given that we do have the local control, I'm completely comfortable with moving back to making it a choice. Again, personally, I think it should have been a choice a little bit, a little bit ways back. I think we're also in a different pandemic now. We're in a different pandemic than we were two years ago, even than we were back this last summer with the new variant that came out. Again, and I'm not trying to make a public health decision, but I think we can all make good educated decisions based on the data that we are presented here in this country and here in this community. You know, we're in a different spot now with a more contagious variant, yet the silver lining to the cloud of the more contagiousness is unfortunately, it's ran through our community. But the good thing is, is it's, it could be, very well be the beginning of the end of this pandemic and changing over to an endemic So given, given what we're seeing now in the data, given what we're seeing in the hospitalization data, given what we're seeing in the case counts, which are continuing to significantly decrease each day, I have no problems supporting the 31st day, the 31st of March being an optional, optional masking for all of our students and for all of our staff. So I'm completely comfortable with that decision for us as a board and for my decision as a board member here tonight, voting for that. I have no problem with that. I do also want to make sure that we do have mitigation strategies in effect for our more vulnerable populations, for our students, for our staff. You know, we had a suggestion from one of our special education teachers that, you know, maybe just one suggestion that they had was, was making sure that we have N95 masks available for them, just to add an extra layer of protection for those students. We want to make everybody feel comfortable with this, with this decision. And, you know, we want to make sure everybody's safe and protected. And if those who choose to wear a mask, please do and feel comfortable and feel welcome and accepted doing so. And again, for those vulnerable populations, we make sure that they have the extra layer of protection needed to make sure that they stay healthy. So again, I'm very comfortable with going along with this decision and voting to make the mask optional on the 31st of March.
Yeah.
I...
Hang on a second. I don't think Tom's had a chance to weigh in yet. I'm going to, I'm going to let him weigh in, and then we'll circle back around.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem moving forward. It couldn't come a second too soon, sooner. It's been really frustrating. I've been the longest person, I've been on the board for, been on the board for 10 years now. And, boy, for the first eight years, seven years, you know, we've heard so much about the anxiety, rising anxiety among our teenagers, their social, emotional health and all that stuff. And then, and, you know, so many advocates advocating for that. You know, and then those, and then here, and then the, and then, you know, here comes COVID. And it's like those advocates just vaporized. I don't know where they went. That discussion just disappeared. And we're seeing, you know, rising anxiety rates. We're seeing, you know, among our kids, I guess I need to talk about, to keep it to kids, you know, we're seeing CDC, CDC, the obesity rate among school-aged kids, the rate of increases. It's always been increasing, but it's just, it doubled. You know, because they're just, they're controlled. They're not, they're, I've been, I listen to a lot of podcasts. I think I mentioned this a lot. And years ago, I got on this rabbit hole about Jean Piaget. mentioned this a lot, and years ago, I got on this rabbit hole about John Piaget, who was a child development specialist back in the day. Scott's referenced him now and then, and podcasts about how, how important those early formative years are. And, and we, and I, you know, and so it's, right now, it's easy to measure the damage caused by COVID because here's a very sick person, here's a person who passed away, you know, there they are, we can chart that person. But the downstream effects of, of a kid, you know, below 10 or something that, that, that's gonna go, that's gonna affect them the rest of their lives and I don't know how to measure that. And that's why I've been so upset about this, because we can't, we don't seem to want to talk about that. Yet, yet we did eight years, we did for the previous eight years before COVID. And all of a sudden, that just vanished. And, you know, as far as some of the anger, a lot of the anger, you know, I watched the Super Bowl Sunday. There was a mask mandate in Los Angeles and there was zero masks. Thousand, if you can afford thousands of dollars for a ticket, you don't got to wear a mask. But the only, I did see masks in the, you know, here and there, but they were the ushers. Go to a restaurant, $100 dinner, you don't got to wear a mask. Well, you got to wear a mask for five seconds. You sit down, you can yuck it up for an hour and a half with your friends, but the staff has to wear the mask. And, and this, this division, this double standard, well, you want to, you want to create angry young children, angry young adults? Teenagers are very sensitive to hypocrisy. And, and that's what, that's what's this. If you can't, if our society cannot afford, cannot enforce this, this mask standard equitably across all socioeconomic lines, you can't do it. And this, it seems to be that at schools, this is the only place in Oregon that's really enforced with rigor. And, and that's where the anger's coming from. And I, I would take these things off tomorrow, but I, I don't want to burn the place down. We got, we're at 40 some days. Just, you know, I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to do my best to keep this place going. You know, try, trying to keep, there's so many good people here working for this district. So obviously I'm in support of the masks, taking the masks off here at the end of March. So, thank you.
Okay. Lori, I heard you weigh in and then Jennifer, I think, come as well.
Yeah, I just want to say that we had this discussion. I, I think my, I understand what people are saying about how it impacts people, but I, I think we also have to look at the fact that wearing a mask is intended to provide support for safety. It's not intended to harm people. It's intended to help them. And whether you believe that or not, that's, that's for you to decide. But I, I want, I believe that I am doing the right thing by wearing a mask to help others. And I think about all those families that have lost somebody due to this pandemic. And that is the end. They've passed, they're gone because of this pandemic. So when we talk about impact and long-term, we have to think about those who, who have had the ultimate sacrifice by losing somebody they love. And so I do take it with very cautious steps because it is a pandemic and yes, it does change and morph. Variants will continue. That is the nature of a virus. But it all started because this, this horrible pandemic started to roll in and this horrible virus started to unfold. And that's why we are here now. And so I think we have to just think about what is best for people. And I do believe in masks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate hearing from everybody and appreciate everybody's point of view. Maybe there are a couple of things that maybe we can agree upon. I'm just gonna put this out there. One is I think everybody is concerned about the vulnerable populations that we have in our schools and maybe we can see it in our role to, you know, be the verifier that Scott and his team are, have a plan or are looking after that. And I think we're gonna do that naturally because he's going to present that document to us. And I know that some parents with kids who are in those vulnerable populations want that upfront before we authorize him to, to make a plan to, to move towards optional masking. And so it's not gonna please everybody, right? But I'm hoping that that's something that we can, that's common ground. The other thing is that what Scott said is absolutely true. When, when he first sent us that message from ODE saying this is, you know, the plan, I skimmed it and I'm like, oh, boy, my principal is going to be up to here again with all of the contact tracing or what, you know, all of the rules. And those had kind of eased up a bit and now it's gonna be a little bit harder. And so what Allison talked about, about, you know, teachers being at the burnout level, I can confirm at my school, we've had an administrator and a teacher leave mid-year. And I know that administrators, I don't know how they're taking care of everything. And so anyways, I, I don't have any answer. I don't have any answer for supporting our staff, but they need, they need our support more than ever.
Yeah, maybe the, you said, you talked about the contact tracing and the stuff that may be coming and then all of that will have to start up after that, even though I'm, we all have different opinions on this. And, but, but if that's, if that's what's coming and, and if, and if I look at the, the rapid decrease of rates of COVID by March, into March, I don't think there's gonna be that much around, knock on wood. You know, just talking to my son, it's like three, four weeks ago, everybody had COVID. You know, you know, it was going around. We had it, it blew through our house, you know? And then I, I asked him and his friends, they were over a couple, three days ago and they're like, they, they don't know anyone who's had it. It's just not, it's not in their circle anymore. So, you know, I'm optimistic, you know, looking at the, at the, at the Silver Falls data, data board, you know, the COVID, you know, they're just, the numbers are just going down. So I'm optimistic that, I mean, it's, good Lord, it seems like everybody I know has either had it or everyone, vast or not, they've had it. And, you know, that's, the science isn't quite in, you know, but it looks like, you know, that, that offers quite a bit of, of protection going forward. So hopefully, knock on wood, that'll be by the end of the March, there'll, there won't be much COVID to trace. So that makes sense. And just kind of going back to the masking and it being optional, I know that before, before COVID, you would, we would, you know, you'd be out in public and you would see someone with a mask on. And that was just an instinct. Everyone has this. That person's got a reason to wear that mask. You just give them a little more space, you hold the door open, you, you know, you don't, you, you just kind of give them space. And I know that I've heard stories that, you know, of parents with a, with a, with a vulnerable kid and when the cold and flu, and this is before COVID, when cold and flu was going around, staff would make accommodations. That was a common practice before. So I don't, that's just a good, common human instinct that we all want to do. And so I'd like to think that, that we'll just keep doing that and, you know, God will, you got, God willing, that the numbers are just gonna keep going down and, you know, hopefully things will keep going down at the current rate and there won't be much COVID to, to track around here in a few, in 42 days? I don't know how many it is, anyway. So.
I'll just add that in my opinion, as a matter of public policy and the use of, use of our public resources, I haven't seen and, and I don't know what our, maybe some of you have seen, I, I don't, I don't see the realized benefit of all the contact tracing and all of the quarantining and all of the, you know, you look at the resources that we have put into that effort, maybe it's saved lives. It doesn't seem to me that way. And I don't know if it's reduced infection rates. I haven't heard anybody talk about that. It's always just been really, in, in what I've heard, just really assumed that these are what we have to do. And I think it's made sense with some other pandemics. I'm not sure it's ma- making any sense with this one at this point in time. But, you know, it sounds like it's gonna continue to take lots of our resources without really a measurable benefit. And I think you, everybody with kids knows probably what's begun to happen and what's happened now for a long time is a lot of families aren't testing. They don't want to know. It's a don't ask, don't tell, you know? And that's, you know, so for maybe that reason alone, if you have a significant portion of the population, you know, behaving that way, contact tracing and quarantining and all that's really not gonna work. And, you know, ultimately, everybody, everybody's gonna have it and be exposed to it. But again, I just think it's a shame that without a known, a known benefit, that we spend so much resources at this point in time in the pandemic. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and just, just to kind of piggyback on that point, I mean, I, you know, oh, talking to a, somebody who just helped me out in the, you know, a young guy helped me out on the farm. He says, yeah, him and his, him and his, you know, him and his wife and his family had it, but they just, well, how'd you know? Did you test it? No, I just, you had to take, they just knew they had it, but they didn't take a test, they didn't report it. It's, it happened, but there, it's not, it's not on the database. And I think there's a lot of that going around. They're not running around, he, he stayed home, he did the right thing still, but it didn't make it to the database, that, that kind of thing. So I, I, I'm just optimistic.
Yeah, no, I think it's really common.
I just wanted to add maybe to Owen's point that, and I'm not defending contact tracing by any means, but it may be that, I wonder if some parents feel better about sending their kids to school if they know they're gonna get a call saying that their kid was exposed. And I think that does matter at the end of the day, how parents feel about, you know, I mean, that's what we're talking about for months here, so.
No, it's also though, you know, listening to Allison and look at the data on the teachers, it feeds directly into their burnout too, right? Because there's so many kids either forced to be home, forced to have special plans or who are being, you know, well, which is, I mean, there's a lot of absences for a lot of different reasons. And I think a lot of it's tied directly to a lot of this. But contact tracing is playing into it and quarantining for sure.
Well, and that is another thing that I didn't bring up, but that has been my main concern since I got COVID, well, the first time in July, I was ill in bed for a long time and I was like, oh, my gosh, what would happen if this was the school year? I wouldn't be able to go to school. And that has been my concern really the whole time is, is at some point, if we have so many absences, we can't staff school, you know? That becomes a problem and that's a time where I could see local control, you know, coming, coming into gear a little bit because we, we want to keep schools open.
Okay, so the, the discussions around the local control, return to local control and, and the decision or the pending decision to authorize the district to go forward with a mask optional plan, basically, right? Is there any further discussion on this item tonight?
I, I think we threw out earlier, you know, when we were asking Scott questions, just about some of the watchouts, you know, for our district, especially if, if the indoor mask mandate ends sooner than the school mask mandate. I, I, I just see that as potentially being a bit of a watch out and a bit of a, could it be a potential tension point in our community if, if that, if those dates aren't congruent?
Right.
So, you know, we, we asked Scott about that and I know that they're, they're sending it up the chain on, you know, with COSA and that kind of thing, but I think that's a, it's a big watch out and I think for me, it's a big, that could be a little, you know, might give me a little bit of heartburn, you know, if those dates aren't the same. I, I think they should be, I think they should be together. But again, I don't make those decisions, so.
No, it's a good point. There were a couple of other things too. So I, I saw a lot of heads nodding in the audience when it came up earlier and I was really pleased. I, it's really important to me, and I know you all agree with this, once it's optional, I don't want any tolerance of any mask shaming from either group, period, because it is a personal decision or a family decision at that point. And, and we just have no room for it. And I just, I want to really, really emphasize that part. The other thing I want to mention to anybody who's still listening, I implore you to be patient with this process. We have still more than a month and it's longer than a lot of people want, but it's the cards we've been dealt and it is what we have to deal with. I implore you to be patient and tolerant and to work within the bounds of the system. It is not trivial to just simply say, well, we're gonna just go ahead and do it now. Sounds easy, but there's an awful lot of dominos that are gonna fall. And they're not all just money, okay? They're really complicated issues, everything from complex litigation matters, which are almost inevitable, grievances and complaint procedures and, I mean, the, the list would be, if we think we're distracted with contact tracing and quarantining, throw that one in the next, right? We, we wouldn't be able to function probably as a district. I'm just being honest. So I implore you to be patient with, with it. It's frustrating. I get it. I like it personally, but we're, this is where we are and I, I really want to implore you all. Anything else? Janet, Lori, you guys good? Okay?
I do have a motion that I will read and we don't have to use it, you know, if you guys want to adjust it, it's fine. Hopefully, I hope we can, we can have, you know, agree on a motion that, that, you know, is most agreeable to, to all members. So hopefully we can get, get there.
Thank you. All right, next up is the long-range, long-range facility planning committee recommendation. So this one actually, you know, was brought up, it was presented, we had an opportunity to discuss it some, I don't know if there's a lot of discussion to happen tonight, but we're gonna open it up, open the floor up. If there's any discussion, this will be voted on. The idea is to approve this. So if you have any discussion, now's your opportunity.
I wanted to mention something. I, I think the architects were averaging, giving the average age of our buildings. I think it, one, forgive me, it's not in front of me. And they were averaging the age of the buildings at around 50, I believe, years old. But, you know, I'm looking and, and I think sometimes the average can be deceptive because if you, if you pull out the 10 or 13 year on the high school and then average those remaining schools, it's more like 66 years. I mean, I, I believe some of them are coming very close to being a century school. Not sure if that's true with Central Hall. But when I saw that average, I just, I know that's a little technical thing, a little granule of sand on a very sandy beach, but I think as we move forward and certainly start to campaign for a bond, we need to clarify the age of each of our schools and their great need ahead. So, Paul?
Yeah, thank you. I know, I appreciate all the work that went into it. I know it was a long, long slog. It, you know, had some bumps along the way, but really, I, I thought the presentation was fantastic. Last time we met, we got a lot of great perspectives and I personally don't have any concern approving their, their formal report.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would ask everybody to join me in voting up the long-range facility planning committee report. See, I learned something.
That's right. You're supposed to stand up.
I'm just a beginner. No, I agree. The, the report was very well done and just in full support of it.
And I'll, again, I'll speak as, from being a participant, as a community member first and then, you know, participating in Kate Workruse as a board member, as a board observation, you know, board observer, the, the process, albeit started quite bumpy. And again, probably wouldn't have started the, the way it did had it been started with our current administration, but it, but the end results sound. Took a lot of thought, a lot of time and I have no problems with the authenticity and the, and the, and the findings in that, in that plan at all, so.
Yep. Yeah, great report. I'm gonna vote yes.
I applaud the process that went into that and everybody who was involved. It's a lot of work.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one before we move along?
Somebody want to take the lead on the motion on that one? Maybe somebody who was on the committee, Lori or Erin or Owen?
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
All right. Next up, we have a number of policy updates. We don't have any first readings, right? So these are all second as well as final. Let me count the number of finals here. One, two, there are three finals and a One, two, there are three finals and a number of second readings, okay? So these got brought up prior, most of them are, were sort of functionary, they were technical updates, tweaks, if you will. Anybody have any that you want to specifically discuss tonight?
Janet, do you have anything to bring back?
Yes, so, on the, on policy BDDH, which is the public comment policy, Jennifer, you had some concern about the wording in that last paragraph regarding written testimony provided ahead of time, that it wasn't perhaps tight enough. So, I edited that language. It's still, I will admit, it's still a little clunky. Hold on, I'm going to see if I can pull it up here. But I think it's, I think it's clearer even if it feels a little bit repetitive. No markup, okay. So, it has been changed to read, and thank you to Debbie for doing this at the last minute. I, I was, for some reason, was thinking it was coming back to the policy work group, and then realized, no, it's going in for its second read. And so she, she was good enough to make these changes for me just yesterday. So now it says, "Materials or comments designated by the submitter," I tried to find a better word, but that's all I could find, "as public comment for a specific board meeting and submitted at least 72 hours in advance of that meeting, will be provided to the board beforehand, but will, but will not be read at the board meeting." We initially had board meeting, you know, the words board meeting repeated like five times, so I did, I did go ahead and, and clean up a little bit of that, but I think it's still very clear. And now, I think the word, you, you were concerned about the word intended, and now it says designated by the submitter. So does, does that, I wanted just to run that by you, Jennifer, in particular, since, does that work better for you? Is there something else?
That's really clear. It may not be, you know, I, I get you on the, the smoothness, but, you know, perfection is the enemy of good, right?
Right, 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 okay. So, yeah, that's the only one I had that, you know, there was another one where I think Owen had, had some concern about strikeout, but Dan clarified for us that it had been an OSBA recommendation. So, those were the only two issues that came up during our first read. I think everything else is good to go.
Okay.
Oh, I wanted to say thanks again to the policy committee when I was saying thanks before I left you two out, those of you on the screen up there. So, I didn't want to let, you know, you think that I wasn't thinking of you. Thank you both for your work on the policy committee.
You're welcome, thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on these policies? Okay, if not, we've got to scroll down past a lot of them. Okay, we have board reports up next, and that was specifically asked for by Jennifer, who's got a...
Oh, yeah, so, we, it's very short, we are engaging a facilitator from OSBA to help us with writing Scott's evaluation report, and so that will commence next meeting. And I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, yes, next regular meeting, thank you, in March. And I wanted to remind everybody to get your feedback into Scott before that meeting, because we don't want to surprise him with anything new, right? So make sure that you've talked to him so that he's not surprised, and also try to relate it to the standards, and just wanted to encourage everybody that this is a really important job that we do evaluating the superintendent. So, that's my report.
Perfect. So, yes, the regular March meeting is what we're talking about here. That brings us to our second public comment, which is specific to discussion and action items. A lot of folks in the audience have disappeared, is there anybody online looking to it?
We do have Eliza online with her hand raised, so hopefully she's still watching, and so, Daniel, if you could promote Eliza to panelists.
Well, hello, I guess I accidentally raised my hand.
How are you doing tonight, Eliza? Good to hear.
I'm pretty well, thank you.
You get the prize for still being engaged on Zoom.
Well, you guys are still there, so thank you. So, I just wanted to say really quickly regarding the transportation RFP, to please consider busing that utilizes efficient vehicles. I don't know if that's really an option, but I see full-size 50-seater buses driving around with six students in them. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So that's just a thought, you know, it would be so great to relieve a little, less diesel. And as far as the mask mandates becoming decided according to local control on March 31st, I wonder who has decided that it's optional for our district? I'm starting to think it sounds like it's going to be a board decision, but it's still not clear to me. And I worry that our district will permanently lose another solid block of students who are committed to masking. My family just wants to help take care of each other, and we won't yell at anybody either way. So I would hope that you can encourage our district to implement systems of compassion that combat potential peer pressure from either side. I think that's about it.
Well, thanks, Eliza. Did Steve, did you get the point about the buses? Did you?
Fuel-efficient buses?
Yeah.
Yeah, the RFP calls for...
Yeah, didn't need to talk about it tonight, I just want to make sure it was sort of somewhere registered as a point brought up, yeah, thanks. Lights are going out here. Everybody move, wave your arms.
Oh, the motion lights?
We could call it ambient lighting, and that'd be kind of cool.
Right, there you go.
As soon as Daniel gets back from turning the lights back on, we do have Kelly Grassman with a hand raised.
All right. Kelly, once Daniel promotes you, feel free to begin.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Technology is not my strong suit, and it's also late. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kelly Grassman, and I have two children in the Silver Falls School District. I just wanted to speak on the masking, or I'm speaking for mask choice. I think it's really important. I have two children, as I stated, one of them has been very greatly impacted in a very negative way by the masking, and that has been a situation our family has been dealing with from the beginning. It has negatively impacted her education to the point where she isn't receiving an education at this point, and led to a lot of mental issues that she never had previously. She was an A and B student, she loved school, couldn't wait to get up and go every morning, and now we have the exact opposite. I understand a lot of the issues surrounding masking, but I don't wish what I have had to go through, or deal with, or watch my child go through on anyone. It has been one of the hardest things I've ever had to do in my entire life, and I am completely helpless. I can't change things for her, and I can't make things better, and other adults are making decisions for my child that are negatively impacting her education. And I just am having a very hard time with that. I know there are parents on the other side whose children feel safer with masks, and who this is a very important issue for them, and I feel for them as well, because I know as we go into this, it's going to be hard for both sides. So, I just hope that we can do mask choice, that is my wish, and also vaccination choice too, I am very supportive of that, and we need to be respectful of people on both sides. I understand that masks make some people feel safer, but they're also very, very difficult for other people. They make it very hard, and they bring up mental health issues that we will not know the effects of for many, many, many years. So, I just wanted to take some time to share that, and thank you all for spending so much time. It is almost 10:21 at night, and you guys are still there, and I just so appreciate all the time and effort you put in. I know that it is not just this meeting and this time, but also the time you spend looking at all of the materials and doing everything. So thank you all for your time and support, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Kelly, really appreciate it.
We did have a hand raised, but then it disappeared. I don't reckon...
Anybody else in the room wanting to come up? No? All right, I think we're going to move along then, unless anybody's, because it's late, so. All right, that's going to bring us to item 16A, which is authorization of the, making the mask mandate optional within the district, and Jennifer Scott.
I move to authorize the superintendent to develop and execute a plan that complies with state rules, making masks optional for students.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or any desire to clarify or modify the motion? With that, I'm going to ask Debbie to take the book.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our long...
Jonathan, on that motion, did, Jennifer, did you have a date in that by which?
No, do you want us to? It says according to state rules, and the rule for the state is March 31st.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, next we have the long-range plant, plant, can't talk anymore, long-range facility planning committee recommendation, which we are voting to approve tonight.
Yeah, I will move to approve the long-range facility planning committee's recommendation as brought to us as a board on January 31st, and presented in the multiple-page document that they gave to us.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? All right?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. All right, and now we have three policy updates in their final reading. We've had multiple opportunities to discuss them. At this point, I would accept the motion to approve all three as published in Board Book.
I'll move to approve the, the third reading, final reading, policies as published in Board Book.
Second.
Second.
Yep, moved and seconded. Any further discussion on these? All right, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right. We have item 17, which is our future agenda item request. This is where you can briefly sort of mention things that you would like to be considered on a future agenda.
Yeah, Jonathan, I got one. I'd like to, as quickly as possible, talk about the vaccine mandate. I'd like to send a, what a resolution, communication to the governor, ODE, to rescind the vaccine mandate for teachers, because, you know, data, and data, and I think everyone's personal experience has shown that the Omicron don't care about your, the vaccine that much, you know, that there, there's way too many breakthrough cases to consider it effective. And the, the idea of that was to stop the spread. And your vaccinated people are getting Omicron, vaccinated people are spreading Omicron, so the, the justification is reducing our pool of available teachers, and we need staff, bus drivers. So I would, I'd love to see it at the next work session.
Thank you.
Get some, get some people thinking that, okay, you know, start some momentum in this state. Am I supposed to, I'm advocating, I need to stop.
Yeah, thanks.
I would just say, I'd be in favor of that discussion as well.
Okay, good to know.
I would too.
All right.
We're not supposed to talk about it.
No. So, any other items for consideration on a future agenda?
You know, Jonathan, I have a quick question. It's not necessarily agenda-related, but some of the people that came forward in public comment mentioned that they would post things on Facebook and then be asked to take them down. Do you know if that is, is that part of, I guess, the district practice? Maybe I should ask Mr. Drew, but I was kind of curious about those statements.
We do not ask people to take down posts.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, we are going to move into executive session under ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, sick leave, excuse me, specifically a sick leave bank request. So this is us returning back to regular open session, and we have one further item to consideration, which is a couple of sick leave bank requests.
I move to authorize a sick leave bank request for surgery and recovery for Danielle Andrews, Andrews, I always say it wrong, I'm sorry, for up to 25 days.
So moved.
And?
Sorry, was that a second? I, I heard something, but I don't know what I heard.
Yeah, it was a second.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right, I move to authorize a sick leave bank request for medical treatment for Michelle Livingston for up to 25 days.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right, everybody, appreciate it. Without objection, meeting adjourned.